Good evening, we're ready to begin. The Planning Commission meeting is now called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. We are live on KCLVX channel, KCLV, Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, Tuesday at 5:00 a.m., and Thursday at 6:00 p.m. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Commissioner Dunham?
Here.
Commissioner Steinman?
Here.
Commissioner Truesdale?
Here.
Chairman Goines?
Present.
Vice Chairman Trowbridge?
Present.
Commissioner Evans?
Present.
Commissioner Quinn?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I call to your attention the information printed in your agenda concerning your actions and the appeal and review process if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate you adhering to those rules so that we can have a smooth meeting. Thank you very much. May I have a motion on the floor of the February 14th?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion.
Or January 24th Planning Commission meeting? Minutes?
So moved.
Motion's on the floor, cast your vote. That motion has passed. Any items from the Planning Commission and staff and/or applicant wishes to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time.
Mr. Chairman, staff has the following housekeeping items. Item 27, VAR 25481, the applicant has requested this item be withdrawn without prejudice. Items 30, 31, and 32, it's SUP 23586, SUP 23594, and SUP 23603. We understand that the applicant would like to withdraw these applications without prejudice. We recommend that you confirm that with him. Items 40, 41, and 42, VAR 26385, SUP 26383, and SDR 26386. Applicant has requested these items be held in abeyance until March 13. Item 46, RQR 26303, applicant's requested abeyance until March 27. Item 47, RQR 26324, staff is requesting abeyance until March 27 to allow for re-notification. And the last item, item 51, SUP 26417, the applicant has requested this item be held in abeyance until March 27.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Mr. Current?
Good evening, I'm Bill Current, Ballard Spire Law Firm, 300 South 4th Street. As indicated, I represent items 30, 31, and 32. We did send a letter asking they be withdrawn, but unfortunately, we only referenced item 30. We meant to include 30, 31, and 32.
Okay, so noted, and we will include those. May I have a motion on the housekeeping items?
I'd like to make a motion to prove the agenda as presented with the abeyance of items number 27, 30, 31, 32, 40, 41, 42, 47, 48, and 51. Is that correct?
If I could have staff reread the-
Read the numbers, yes.
-abeyance withdrawal items.
27 is withdrawn without prejudice, 30, 31, and 32 withdrawn without prejudice, 40, 41, and 42, abeyance March 13, 46, abeyance March 27, 47, abeyance March 27, and the last item, 51, abeyance March 27.
Thank you. That's the motion then. Thank you very much.
Motion on the floor, please cast your votes. See if I have any questions or comments on any of the abeyance withdrawal items as read into the record. Seeing none, we'll cast your votes. Thank you very much. Motion carries. Items 6 through 9 on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, recommended for approval by the department, and may be enacted in one motion or one vote. Does anyone wish to pull any of these consent items from the consent calendar? Seeing none, we'll take a motion on the consent items.
I'd like to make a motion for approval, subject to all staff conditions for item number 6, 7, and 8, and 9.
Motion's on the floor for approval of items 6 through 9 on the consent agenda, please cast your vote. That motion has carried.
Items 6 and 7 are final action, 8 and 9 will go forward to counsel in ordinance form.
Thank you. Moving on to our one motion, one vote, the following items that may be considered in one motion, one vote, they are considered routine, non-public hearing items. All public hearing items and non-public hearing items will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application, or a member of the public, or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, staff has the following items that we'd like to have pulled off of one motion, one vote. Item 10, SDR 25484, staff has not received confirmation from the applicant that they accept the conditions of approval. Item 14, WVR 26441, and related item, VAC 26443, staff has condition changes to those applications, and we also understand that there are people in attendance who would like to discuss the applications. And the last item, item 16, VAC 26442, we have not received confirmation from the applicant indicating that they accept the conditions of approval, so we'd like to have that opened. Thank you.
Okay. So again, staff, that would be items 10, 14, 15, and 16?
Correct.
Thank you. Those items will be pulled. I'll go ahead and read the one motion, one vote items into the record. Item 11, VAR 25459, applicant owner, Benai Gornados, to allow two 58.86-foot wide lots where 65 feet is required at 170 Paco Street. Item 12, VAR 26493, applicant owner, 212 Las Vegas Boulevard LLC, to allow a two-sided projecting sign of 42 square feet where 32 square feet is permitted, and to allow a setback of zero from the curb where three feet is the minimum required at 212 Las Vegas Boulevard South. Item 13, RQR 26439, applicant Reagan National Advertising, owner Miguel William P. Atall, required two-year review on an approved special use permit, SUP 2759, which allowed a 40-foot tall, 14-foot by 48-foot off-premise advertising billboard sign at 793 North Nellis Boulevard. Item 17, SDR 26350, applicant owner, Velia L. Montarez Trust, for a three-unit condominium development adjacent to the north side of McWilliams Avenue approximately 105 feet west of F Street. Item 18, SDR 26446, applicant owner Cliff Shadows LLC, for a two-story, 23,940-square-foot office building at 3375 Norvath Street. And that concludes the one motion, one vote. Any questions or comments on any of these items? I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and ask would anybody like to come and speak for or against these items. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll entertain a motion on the one motion, one vote item.
Seeing no discussion, I make a motion for approval, subject to all staff conditions for items 11, 12, 13, 17, and 18.
Motion's on the floor, please cast your vote. And that motion is for approval. That motion has passed.
Items 11, 12, and 13 go forward to counsel on April 2nd. Items 17 and 18 are final action in the absence of an appeal to the City Clerk's office within 10 days.
With that, we'll move on to item number 10, SDR 25484. Applicant owner Craig 95 LLC, major amendment of an approved site development plan review, SDR 19643, for a proposed 41,097-square-foot shopping center adjacent to the south side of Craig Road west of US 95. Staff?
Staff finds this application to be consistent with the pattern of development that's occurring at this intersection and recommends approval.
Applicant?
Good evening, Catherine Greider, 3610 North Rancho, here tonight on behalf of the applicant. We do agree with the extra conditions that we received and would ask for your recommendation for approval.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, is anybody in the audience for or against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the commissioners?
Seeing none, I'm ready to make a motion for approval for site development review 25484, subject to all staff conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval, please cast your votes. And that motion has passed.
Thank you. Final action in the absence of an appeal to the office of the City Clerk within 10 days.
Item 14, WVR 26441, applicant owner Corestone LLC, waiver of Title 18 dot 12 dot 130 to allow First Street to terminate in a dead-end street where a cul-de-sac is required at the southeast corner of First Street and Boulder Avenue. Related item, VAC 26443, vacation related to WVR 26441, applicant owner Corestone LLC, petition to vacate Boulder Avenue between First Street and Casino Center Boulevard, the alley generally located at the northwest corner of Boulder Avenue and Casino Center Boulevard, and a portion of the west side of Casino Center Boulevard located between Coolidge Avenue and Boulder Avenue, Ward 3. Staff?
Staff finds this application to be consistent with the pattern of development in the area and recommends approval.
Mr. Chairman, before you-
Commissioner Evans?
It's come to my attention that Mr. Isbut has a partner in his business venture that is my friend Enrique Tenoco I have a personal and a professional relationship with, so I will be abstaining on this matter. Thank you.
So noted.
Mr. Chair? I do need to clarify something for the record. There was a corrected notice sent out on this property, and I don't believe the applicant had anything to do with the notice that went out first time, but it did go out under the name Cornerstone, which is a company that I own, and the corrected one is Corestone. I just want to put on the record I own no interest in any of the properties within this vacation or within the notice area, just to clarify that.
Thank you, that is noted for the record. Okay. Staff?
They're in charge.
Okay. We pull this at the request of Public Works. We'll hear from Public Works to-
Thank you. Gina Van Glass with Public Works. During the course of this application, we were working with the applicant on several items as to the boundary of what the actual vacation area would be. So tonight I would like to request that we revise condition of approval number 2, to change the limit of the Boulder Avenue area to be the easternmost edge of First Street, and then eastward to Casino Center. And then there's some other condition that just erroneously got left off, and then lastly we'll be adding a condition requiring a site development plan be submitted, so I'll go ahead and read those in. We would like to revise condition of approval number 2 as follows. The limits of this vacation shall be defined as those portions of Boulder Avenue between the eastern boundary of First Street and the westerly boundary of the city's Casino Center Third Street Realignment Project, the 20-foot-wide alley located at the northwest corner of Casino Center Boulevard and Boulder Avenue, and a portion of the west side of Casino Center Boulevard located between Coolidge Avenue and Boulder Avenue that has been determined to no longer be needed as a part of the city's Casino Center Third Street Realignment Project or any other city projects as determined by the city engineer. We request to add the following condition. Prior to recordation of an order of vacation, provide a plan acceptable to the city engineer showing how the right-of-way proposed to be vacated will be incorporated into the abutting properties, including the property not controlled by the applicant if applicable, so that an unmaintained no-man's-land areas are produced by this action, and all affected parties are aware of the final disposition of the property to be vacated. The required plan shall identify exactly who is responsible to reclaim each portion of right-of-way and exactly how the right-of-way will be reclaimed, and shall provide a schedule of when such reclamation will occur. The last condition reads as follows. Prior to recordation of the order of vacation, submit a site development plan review for review and approval by the city council for the entire area of Boulder Avenue requested for vacation with this application.
Thank you very much for those conditions. This is a public hearing, anybody for or against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We have the applicant present. Are you okay with those conditions as read in by Public Works?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Hold on, Mr. Appicant, I opened and closed that so fast, I'm sorry, this is a NASCAR weekend, so I may be a little on the throttle. I'm gonna go ahead and reopen the public hearing. Anybody for or against this item, please come up and speak. Please state your name and address for the record. Applicant, we have more than one person, if I could ask you to step back, and sir, if you'd like to occupy both microphones. Thank you.
My name is Jack Solomon. I'm against this. I own some property that is abuts Boulder Street. I'm a member of the board of the Las Vegas Sculpture Park. I also am a long-term lessee of the S2 Art Center, which is at 1 East Charleston, which abuts Boulder Street. I'm a long-term tenant with an option. The owner is here with me. I am very much against giving this, the rest of Boulder Street, to private property, because up until now, this has been planned for a wonderful sculpture park for the public. We have been working very, very hard, as many of the people here know, on an Agam sculpture that would really transform the arts district into a world-class operation. The sculpture is gonna cost around plus or minus $5 million. Much of the money is in the process of going to be raised by donations, and the city has already set aside money for the installation and the underground and some of the other stuff. When that was proposed, it was always my understanding, because I've been working very hard and have contributed a significant amount of money as a donation to make this thing happen. I believe that it is in the public interest not to turn Boulder Street into private property. Boulder Street should be, in the way that it abuts with First Street, it should be open to the public as was always originally planned. Once we get through with the Agam sculpture, we can have some other sculptures by world-class artists. That's the kind of thing that will make the arts district really, really hum. And to, although I know my friend Wes, I'm against, he and I are 94% on everything else, and this is something I'm really, we've discussed it at length, I'm really very much against taking this for private property. It also cuts off a lot of access to my properties. When you combine it with the cutting off of First Street, First Street was supposed to be a semi-public walk, it's in the master plan, so I would, I feel sort of left out that staff has never consulted with me, this has sort of dropped on me, without staff talking to Roger or myself.
Mr. Solomon, I'm gonna give you about 30 seconds to wrap it up, please.
Okay, I would just like the thing to be postponed. I don't want to stand in the way of the development that Wes and his partners are planning, but on the other hand, taking this property on Boulder and turning it from what was always planned to be public and making it private causes all sorts of problems. And just take a look at all of the, we think there will be hundreds or even thousands of people that will come to participate in the Agam Sculpture Park, which is 36 wonderful pillars where people actually go into this forest, and there's no exit now. You just come in off of Main Street and it just stops. There's safety problems, there's an easement problem right through this with the power company that goes to my buildings. I think that we really have to go back to planning, I'd like to move that the thing we postponed, I don't want to stand in the way, but on the other hand, this is done just without our input.
Thank you very much.
Roger Drum, 3200 Beemery Court, North Las Vegas. I own number 1 Charleston, the S2 Art Building. It was presented to me to cooperate with the city of Las Vegas in their arts district. So the Nevada Development Authority brought that down on top of us, we brought in Mr. Solomon and his group to anchor that, and so the cooperation, my cooperation has been always been that we have an arts district. It was presented to me through several correspondence that you have from the city, from Jorge Cervantes, that city staff, that that was going to be a sculpture park all the way through from Casino Center to Main Street. So I cooperated, and now the cooperation is down to internally, you have some internal problems. We're taking out 20-year-old landscaping in favor of this arts district that I put in $22,000 into play when I moved Jack into this building. So there's a real, there's a real problem with my cooperation in creating the arts district. And I've cooperated to the extent that, yes, we're gonna go forward with what we have today, and that's the Agam structure. They cannot build on that property that's being vacated. It has high-voltage lines running through it, and the McCarthy substation is not going to be moved within the next two, three years. It's taxed. I'm the project, I was the project manager on the Newport Lofts project, and that project took all the power out of that McCarthy substation. So that McCarthy substation is not going to go anyplace, and they can't build underneath it. So what could they use it for? They could use it as an assemblage of property to pencil out their loan, and that's what I feel is probably at case here, is what they're using is putting as much property together as they possibly could to pencil their loan out, at the cost of the egress and ingress to the backloading of those two properties, being the arts factory and being my property, the S2, which is backloaded onto Boulder Avenue. So if you make these corridors that are public walkways, you have to realize, and I'm sure you do, that a lot of those properties don't have front and backloading, they only have backloading or frontloading. So I have a loading dock there, I have a loss in value if that property's vacated. The Bank of America and Hartford Insurance have real concerns about the safety of this building and the addressing the life safety support of this building. Fire Department, the largest vehicle that will access that property will be maintaining the high-voltage lines that go through there. It's the heaviest vehicle you got, and it can't turn around in 80 feet. Your code says 80-foot cul-de-sac, and you want to eliminate that 80-foot cul-de-sac, you're taking away from all of that service to that property.
Okay.
I'm opposed.
Give you about 30 more seconds to wrap it up?
I'm opposed adamantly. And I'm opposed for a lot of different reasons. It was presented to me that this was going to be an arts plaza all the way through in the very beginning, and we had meetings with the city, and the city represented that, and so I cooperated. Now, it seems that the cooperation is gone. I'm opposed.
Thank you very much.
Adamantly.
The public hearing is still open, is there anybody for or against the item, please come up. Sir, if you have a photo, you can set it right on that center markings on the, thank you very much. Please state your name and address for the record.
Dick Guyer, 8260 Hilton Head Court, Las Vegas. I am the president of the Las Vegas, or 18B, the Las Vegas Arts District Neighborhood Association, and also the executive director, you might say, of the Sculpture Park Board of Directors, and have been working on this project for several years, as have both Jack and Wes. The drawing that you have here was done by Adetazio, who's a landscape architect, under the direction of Pogomeyer, one of the leading engineering firms here in the city, and it represents what we need to do in order to have the Sculpture Park work. These pillars, as you move around them or to them or from them, give you a different visual impression, and that's what's exciting about them, they're not just static, they really come to life as you move around them. So this park originally, when the city found SNPLA money for it, $1,478,000, was going to cover the entire park as you see on the screen. However, as time has gone on and costs have gone up, it turned out that they could only afford to work on it from the sculpture itself up to the first set of ballers.
You can actually point to that on there, we can see that. Andy, can you grab him that mic in the middle so he can hold it?
Dick, this is the drawing you want to see.
So sir, let me clarify, you're here in support of it?
Yes.
Correct.
So this, the plans that we have have been covered many, many, many times over the last year with Jorge Cervantes. And I had a meeting with him on another subject last week, actually the contract for the maintenance of it, the long-term contract, and he said, I said, well, maybe we need to change the fence or something. He said, you can't change anything, everybody's agreed to it. So I don't know Mr. Drum, so I can't speak for when he was alerted to what we were doing. Now as to the, and that has to do with the technical thing of access by vehicles, access by the fire truck, and so on and so forth. I have to trust that Jorge knows what he's doing. I don't, I have to trust him.
Want to take us through the site plan?
And, well Wes would be better at that than I am. The thing that I just wanted to say on behalf of Mr. Isbut, and on behalf of the Sculpture Park, and also the 18B, the Arts District Neighborhood Association, is we have gone over this many times, we all know this is going to happen. I have had no indication that Mr. Isbut or Wes has any intention to encroach on this property in any significant manner, because he knows as well as I do that the sculpture looks differently from close than it does far, and if we're going to have 3,000 people a day come, as we promised the old CVA the other, back last year when they ultimately gave us $50,000, we cannot do away with this park as it looks. It may not be exactly the same, but it will not be substantially changed. If, I believe if that motion comes to the board of the Neighborhood Association, we will strongly oppose it, and certainly as long as I'm president, we will, and I believe the Sculpture Park Board would also do the same. So Wes, do you have any more you want to say?
Good evening.
Wes, are you gonna need that microphone to point things out, or are you gonna move over there? Why don't you let him have it? At this time, we're gonna close the public hearing, and we'll hear from the applicant.
Okay, first, I find it a bit amazing, I'd like to bring some truth to what is going on here as opposed to a lot of the rhetoric. First of all, I've been in this arts district long before Mr. Solomon, I had a vision of this arts district long before Mr. Drum ever believed this could be the case. I've been through this process for many, many years. I'm the founder of the Neighborhood Association, I'm on the Board of Directors for the Sculpture Park. This item has been brought up with these organizations and approved by these organizations. The fact that Mr. Solomon does not know just attests to his absence of those meetings, not the lack of information being produced. Our plan, our goals have always been to make this a sculpture park. The dollars that Mr. Solomon refers to as donation came from a partnership that we had together that I ma- had together that I managed and I facilitated those donations. So I can proudly say that I put my money where my mouth is. Prior to anyone else being there, I am the owner of the arts factory. I have sponsored these events for well over a decade. Our plan for this, this came about due to the building of our urban lounge, the first urban lounge in the city of Las Vegas. We applied for this lounge almost two years ago. We are entitled, we are financed, we are trying to work through the logistics of infill building in the city, which, as we all know, is extreme. It was suggested to me by Public Works due to a need to eventually enlarge Charleston or take a larger public right-of-way on Charleston, that this building should be set back slightly onto the Boulder Plaza. My group has acquired the entire block to the north of the arts factory. I would like to show a drawing of this now. Here, which is this, if you can see that coming in. Okay, this entire block here. We plan to build 250,000 square feet of mixed use based on arts synergies, ceramic center, theatrical center, sculpturing center, sculpture center, photography center, et cetera. More of what we've always dreamed and talked about. The Boulder Plaza was initially a large sculpture park going the entire distance, as was explained, due to, you know, it's hard to get public funds. And when you can find a million four, it's wonderful. When you need five or six to do the whole thing, it's a little more difficult. We were, you know, fortunate enough, due to some smart thinking by the city, to obtain these funds to do the infrastructure for a proposed Agam sculpture. This is a sculpture that I sit on the board for, that I have arranged for and worked on very hard to produce. At this moment, it is a dream of ours, it is not a reality. I worked diligently, as does Mr. Guyer and the Sculpture Board, to make this, and we hope that it comes to fruition. We sure plan on it. Our goal for the rest of the street is consistent. It is a plaza. It is a plaza to feed the sculpture park, it is a plaza to feed our development, it is a plaza to feed the urban lounge, which is the first need of this park. We have no intention to do anything but a plaza. We're happy to accept the conditions that will always make it a plaza. By vacating it, specifically the abandoned alleyways that exist, they allow us to redirect our building and to use those. I'd like to address the substation that Mr. Drum was talking about. We actually plan to keep the substation to, if you will, to embrace or to celebrate the industrial. We plan to encase it with glass. We're working with Nevada Power to beautify it. We're going to put it on display. We have, you know, we're downtown, we're all about the industrial. So like developments you've seen in Pasadena or the Grove, they take the areas that are industrial and they just spruce them up and make it part of the development. That's fully our intention. We feel this is harmonious and part of the plan. I mean, the advantage in the arts district and the city is the city doesn't have to pay for it. This happens three to 20 years prior than the Sculpture Park Association being able to mount the funds to do it. We see it as a win for everyone, and we believe that the complaints are made, and I apologize, gentlemen, out of ignorance as opposed to out of knowledge.
Thank you very-
And we request your approval of this.
Thank you very much. Public hearing is closed. Comments or questions by the board?
I've got a quick question. On the display you put on the overhead, can you go back to that and tell me where this gentleman's property is?
Mr. Solomon, the public hearing is closed. There will be no more comments taken.
A lot of things were said about me that are not-
Mr. Solomon, we're not here to get personal. We're taking the merits of this application as it has been displayed.
A lot of things were said that aren't true.
Mr. Solomon, we're going to take no more comment. Thank you very much. Continue, Mr. Dunham.
Can you show me where his property is on that display?
This property right here is owned by Mr. Drum. This property right here-
And that's the gentleman that, the two gentlemen that spoke?
Yes. Mr. Solomon is the tenant in this property, Mr. Drum is the owner.
Okay.
Mr. Solomon owns a couple of properties here on First Street. The vacation area is this direction of in here. We do not impede any of the access off of First Street for the back of house. This property accesses off of Main, Charleston, and back here off of First. These properties access both on Main and First. The truck turnaround that we're talking about wouldn't have any, you know, difference than it happens now. The trucks pull in, they pull out, they pull in, they pull through.
The only reason I'm asking that is because the display that I have, the vacation shows that it would prohibit those trucks going southwesterly on First Street from doing the movement you just-
South-
Southwest. That alley runs north, northeasterly, southwesterly. Yes, that movement right there you just did with your finger would be prohibited by the vacation.
Sir, it would not.
Yes, it would on the second application.
Well, I'm not going to get into an argument on this, but the display that I have, the display that I have says that that movement you just showed me would be prohibited, and that's my issue.
The vacation ends at this point right here? Is that the map you have?
That's not what I have in front of me. I apologize.
Hold on, Wes, let me, let me do a couple of things first. We're not going to take any shouting from the audience. It's number one. When the public hearing is open, that's when you come up and make your comments. We're not going to take any shouting from out of the audience. Number two, I'd like Gina from Public Works to come up and explain and depict the radiuses that Commissioner Dunham was talking about, and I want to make sure that we're looking at the same plan.
Thank you. The first condition I read in the record, which was a modification to condition number two, will actually revise the area shown on the exhibit in your packets over to the easterly boundary of First Street.
All right, I'm good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Dunham, are you satisfied?
As is shown in this drawing here.
I think she needs, I think there's another element to that.
Gina, can you put that back up?
There's the application that includes the portion on-
Casino Center.
Well, no, on First Street itself.
Right.
That, when you say if you're moving that over, then what are we looking at on the application for the piece that's just north of that line?
No waiver.
Item number 14.
And First Street?
Yes. The waiver.
Well, right now, they have submitted the waiver that will allow First Street to terminate without a cul-de-sac. So that is before you tonight to decide what you feel is appropriate. First Street is an 80-foot right-of-way, and certainly we've been working with the property owners, abutting First Street in Plan Two in the future, to remove parking from First Street in the area down here to allow more room for trucks to turn around and get out. By backing the vacation further to the east, it will allow the movement of Mr. Drum's property to get his vehicles back out through First Street out to Coolidge.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I mean, does the applicant have some more presentation or?
What was not stated there is there actually, on the map that you see on Casino Center, there is a, you know, for lack of a better term, I'll call it the grassy knoll. It's like a little nose that sticks out, which is not part of the vacation that will remain as a portion of the city, which is different than the map that was just shown, which is on the map that I'm showing you here.
Sorry, Wes. Right, I, also, the same condition, number two, that I revised, the last sentence of that describes that we can modify that area based upon the city's Casino Center, Third Street Realignment Project, or any other city projects, as determined by the city engineers. So that area right now is planned to be backed out of the vacation and remain a city right-of-way.
Thank you. Chairman, I'm a little concerned here, because obviously this board has seen numerous presentations brought before us for this, for the sculpture park. And it, unfortunately, it's always been my understanding that this Boulder street in totality was a critical element of the sculpture park and hard surface and that. And I'm, you know, whether neighbors get along or not, that's irrelevant to me. It's more a matter of, are we, is there anything within this vacation that would put this overall sculpture park and the finished aesthetics of the entire block at risk? I'm trying to understand, I understand the waiver, because you're building, you know, you're wanting to do a larger project and you own the block. But I just don't want to wind up, at the end of the day, saying, we did all this, but we vacated something that prevents us from getting the sculpture or getting what we envisioned on First Street. I know we have the power to deal with, we have a lot to deal with, but it would have made it much easier here if all the property owners were in concert tonight, because it raises some questions that honestly, I know staff may have some, but I don't, I'm not sure we see all of answers here, because the picture itself of where the sculpture's going, how trucks will turn, how these properties will access themselves, is important to me for this, I believe, the success of the arts district, or the arts factory, your properties, as well as Mr. Drum's property and Mr. Solomon's properties. So I'm a little confused by what we're, why the vacation, what it could do to the arts or to the sculpture and the Boulder Park concept.
If I can ask Mr. Guyer to bring the drawing back up, which was done well over a year ago, I'll explain how this plan's to work in concert with that and actually enhance or. In this drawing, you see here, this drawing you see here, this area right here is First Street that comes through, and this would be the S2 building, and this would be the arts factory in here. And if you notice, it sort of, it doesn't look like a road. And the intention was back over here to have controlled access, ballards, some type of controlled access that would be back of house, fire, type of emergency type of access. This is what was on the plans, has been talked about for several years now. Our private sector goal is to complete this plaza in a harmonious way to this plaza. We are banking on this. This is part of our development plans. Now, what Mr. Drum is talking about is we couldn't even execute what is being talked about, or has been talked about, which he has signed on to for several years. And your concern about that turnaround was already, you know, taken off the books when we put this plan into play. Our new plan actually enhances that access, makes it greater than what was approved back then. Our plan and goal is to still harmoniously continue the plaza at a far greater rate. We're willing to accept the conditions, that is the case. We're willing to accept the conditions it remains public access. I mean, I'm not understanding what public guarantee is necessary, but we're willing to go along with that. It's a win for everyone. The city doesn't have to maintain it, pay for it, it happens faster, it increases access to the other properties. I repeat, I think that the reason that there's objection is really lack of understanding of the project than anything else.
Well, I share some of that lack of understanding of the project, and I, I'm a big supporter of parks and a big supporter of the arts. So I want to help you here, but you got to make me understand, or I'm not going to go with you.
I hope so.
Okay, so you're saying, when we look at item number 15, that's the vacation, and amendment to condition number two moves the vacation back to where it parallels First Street on the east side.
Correct.
Okay. That, where you were pointing previously, where you've got your ballards?
Here.
That is-
First Street.
That is the limit of the vacation that's being requested in item number 15, correct?
To this point right here.
Correct. Okay, I'm with you. Now, item number 14, when we look in, keep your eyes on that same document, because that is where we're requesting the alley or First Street to be terminated. But yet you said that your goal is to have ballards there. Ballards are to prohibit traffic flow-
We don't-
-which would have the impact of denying what appears to be the access needed by the property owner to the south.
Well, the public safety kind of overwhelms that access, and we don't want people being hit, you know, on this pedestrian plaza by cars pulling through.
And now you're going to put the, okay, we've got conflicting, conflicting goals here.
Controlled access.
One is to have the flow of the patio area, the mezzanine.
The plaza.
The plaza. And the same time, to sort of have sometimes traffic, but we need to say that this man has access to his property.
Control. Deliveries, trash, fire.
Anytime this man needs access to his property, he can come right to your phone number and run right down and take the ballards out so he can get the vehicles through there?
It would be a similar situation to Fremont Street and how the ballards are there and how whoever is supposed to have access.
So he would not have, when he has delivery at whatever time, would not have access to it?
Yes, he would.
So you'll take the ballards down?
I mean, now, the sculpture park would have to decide what's safe and not safe, but-
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
But yes.
No, what we're saying is the man will or will not have access. And if you're going to say, yes, he does have access, I want to know when he does have access.
He has access. He absolutely has access at whatever schedule would be appropriately arranged, okay? As long as-
So the man's access to his private property is going to be controlled by some document. He's got, you got to say, you can only have-
I know how to answer that.
Follow me through. You're going to, you're going to be telling me, you can only have deliveries between three and four, because that's what it says on the agreement. Is that-
As part of the agreement that the Sculpture Park Association, which I helped to write with the city of Las Vegas-
Congratulations.
...was the fact that the city would have the ability to hold events on the place, on the plaza, okay? So they're going to come to us, the Culture Arts Division or some of the division is going to come to us and say, Tuesday at 4 o'clock, we're going to hold an event on the plaza. And we're going to go, God bless you. Now, if that happens to interfere with the delivery schedule that my neighbor has, I have no control over that, okay? So I have control over what happens over here. I have a vote on a board of what happens as far as the access availability, just as the occupants do over here.
Okay. And what voice does the owner of that private property have on gaining access to his property?
He has a very strong voice. I mean, there's no desire to hurt any business there or anything. I mean, as long as it's within public safety.
I admit that there's no desire, there's no intent.
There's a very good chance, actually, I would say, I mean, there's no reason that they wouldn't have whatever key or locking system with the same that Fire Department would have for those ballards and would, as long as they practice safe, safe driving, would have any access that they so choose, at any time they choose. You know, we would hope, like in other developments, that you pick the times appropriately.
I doubt if you're hearing what I'm hearing when you speak. What I'm hearing is that he can have safe access anytime he wants it, but then you said that it's going to have to be stipulated way ahead of time.
It would not be appropriate during-
I'm trying to, I'm fighting to support your program, but at the same time, we can't do something that's going to negative impact a private, piece of private property without bearing the consequences.
If, at 10:00 in the morning, unscheduled, a truck were to drive off of Main Street and pull into this parking lot of that owner, they would be able to drive out this way and remove those ballards and continue on with no one stopping them. Now, I would like to believe that there's some, you know, higher power here that's going to control that so that it's not at the wrong time of day or the wrong time of situation, just as controls are made with deliveries in residential neighborhoods for commercial businesses based on the neighborhood and the safety aspect of things. So I, you know, now, we can talk the overall, you know, the concept of access, which we're fully, you know, agreed. I mean, if this commission seems so fit, this doesn't have to be controlled at all. It can be left open. I don't think it's in the best, you know, in public interest that a plaza of this magnitude be open, exposed like that, but, you know, crazy things have been done.
If I could jump in for a second, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Public Works.
Thank you. Chairman Trowbridge, I think it'd be a little more accurate to say, since we're going to back the vacation to the east side of First Street, it'd actually be more of an agreement between the city and Mr. Drum than it would be with the applicant on the vacation application, because we're going to keep that part public. And I have a letter here that was to Mr. Drum from the city engineer that does discuss placing removable ballards in that area that you've been discussing back and forth. So I know Mr. Drum has been-
And that was dated when?
This is dated August 8, 2006. So again-
And the plans have been changed since then?
I wouldn't say the plans are definite at this point, but since the vacation is being moved to the east side of First Street, it certainly would be something that the city would be working out with Mr. Drum as far as, do ballards go there? Where? Are they removable? Are there no ballards and that sort of thing? And that has not been worked out at this point in time.
But Mr. Drum does have access to his property off of the, would that be the, coming down Main off the west side?
That's correct.
So he's got ample access where he may not even need to even entertain going through the plaza at all.
Now, certainly that is what he has requested, which is why we want to move the vacation further east so that he can use First Street if he chooses.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman? Any more questions, comments?
Yeah, I do have a couple, because I, again, you know, we want, we want this plaza, we want what's happening here, but- we want what's happening here, but when you, when you talk about, when some of the issues raised by Commissioner Trowbridge about access and in any of these type of plazas or any of this, you know, quasi-public-private operated space, it's important to understand before we, you know, pass on this vacation one way or the other, is that if a delivery truck comes to Mr. Solomon's property, they can't turn around, you know, a large truck that's, that needs to get through there. And you're saying that they can have, they can get through there, all they have to do is contact somebody. It gets to a question of burden if somebody's paying a truck standing time to make deliveries while somebody is called or while somebody is organized to, to remove ballards. And I think, I think the intentions are well made and I think the plan can, can be worked out, but I, I think some of that has to be worked out prior to us throwing the, you know, or, or dealing with this ownership or this vacation that puts a, a preconceived outcome of this. I have concerns about the plaza when you talk about building it in multiples phase, you know, the sculpture going, being built by one group, you're going to build this, is the plaza going to be the same level of construction and requirements to the public, to what public space would be for those truck loading and all of that? So I just have some real concerns that we, we don't jump too fast into the, the vacation without understanding what the impacts are for, for both parties because I, I think they're, they could be significant.
The Ballard, no Ballard, ship sailed back in August. Now, if you want to pull that back and remove the ballards, I can argue safety or not, but that is irregardless of what we're here for today. But that particular aspect of, is that going to be controlled or not, was discussed and worked out when this whole plan came down, six months, a year, I mean, it's been, so that has been prediscussed and predetermined. And we can definitely reexamine that if, if there's access needed, we're happy to, to work with everyone. We're not trying to stifle any business. You know, there is a weight there, I keep bringing up with the public safety aspect, but that's, that, that, that's another aspect to this. We're happy to agree to almost any condition of the quantity of improvement, you know, that it's, I mean, I believe in the improvement was a site development, a review so that, that the plans are approved of what we're going to do, so it's up to the, the level that, that is hoped for. I have no fears because I know what our track record is and what we've done and what we plan to do, so I mean, that's right in line with our goals and our, and our dreams. You know, I can come back to one more thing, the fact that we own this block to the north. I mean, this is not speculation, this is not, you know, an arena or anyone else who doesn't, I mean, I've been there for over 15 years, I'm vested in, 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 in the area. We're successful, we're expanding, this is a natural expansion of that. We plan, and I can only repeat this as many times, we plan to keep it public access and a plaza in all, in all aspects. This came about due to a desire to push back on Charleston, this was the natural place to do it, and here we are today.
Thank you.
Gina, could you do me a favor and on the, the overhead, show me where those ballards are going to go on the display that we have so that you and us up here are looking at the same picture, please?
Sure. And back in '06, the ballards that the city engineer and Mr. Drum had discussed would be at this location. Now, certainly things have changed now and here we are tonight and all these issues are being brought up again. Nothing's been finalized as to the location, certainly they could be placed here.
Honestly, if they go where you just pointed, I'm okay. But putting them in the middle of public right of way, I have real issues.
So, right, so they certainly could be placed on this east side, certainly there could be no ballards. And again, that, you know, has not been finalized as an agreement, but we are working with Mr. Drum and, and, you know, we do want everybody to come out happy here and-
So those other ballads, ballards are approved? Those right there?
They aren't approved, they were discussed and it was an option in a memo.
But that's not on our-
As far as it goes.
That's not on our agenda tonight.
No, it's not.
Correct.
And we've moved the vacation again to be the east side of First Street, so that's going to all remain public, so it will be more of a dealing between the city and Mr. Drum.
Correct, thank you. We have a couple more questions, Vice Chairman Trowbridge, and then we'll go to Commissioner Quinn.
Okay, not to beat a horse to death, but if, what is happening and what is the status of the Boulder Avenue west of First Street between, between First and Main where the majority, the other half of the plaza is to be, what's the status of that parcel?
Boulder Avenue, I'm sorry, Boulder Avenue West, I mean?
Boulder Avenue West, where the, where the statues are going to go.
What is the status of that?
The western, the western portion of the plaza.
My understanding-
What is the status of it?
My understanding is that the city has employed the Griffith Company to oversee the project, the designs are being done by Pogomeyer.
Do, I mean, the status, I'm not talking, I mean, is it public right of way now or do you have possession of it or do you own it or do you have it leased or, what is the status of the parcel?
That, the piece of, of Boulder that is between Main and First Street?
Yes, ma'am.
The city engineer's office is doing those plans for the park, they're at a 90% level on the plaza.
Are they going to come forward and ask for me to vacate it?
No, that will remain public due to the funding sources that were involved and such.
Thank you.
Commissioner Quinn?
I frequent the Arts District and I truly love it and I spend a lot of time down there in First Friday and different things and I've loved watching this area flourish for all of our city. My problem, sitting here today, is I don't feel, as a planning commissioner, I've been giving, given all the information and I also am able to put myself in the shoes of Mr. Solomon who owns property down there because I think when you're doing something so grand for the entire city, we should all be on the same page. And my feeling, and I don't know what you call this, I don't feel comfortable voting on something that I don't feel I have enough information on. Is it going to go there, is it going to go there, are we going to move it? And the other thing is, I find it impossible to believe that you're going to be able to call up and say, okay, at 10:00 AM, I'm going to have a truck come in and we'll be there. Nobody's going to show up on time, everything's going to get screwed up. And so I just kind of feel that although your plan is great and your intentions are wonderful, I personally don't feel comfortable that we're, I am ready to make a decision on this because I don't feel like I know enough and I'm sorry.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments by the board? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion on item 14.
If I could take a shot at it here, I, I feel that you've got an excellent project that has not been presented to the, in a fashion that we understand what we're being asked to do. I think that you've got an issue with access to the gentleman's private property there that's, it's of a, it's of a concern. I feel that the public's need for a proper plaza and an art display might outweigh that individual's concern. I feel that if I could muster enough support in the board, I could support the request to waiver and to allow First Street to be terminated there because it just makes good sense if you're going to have a large plaza there. Nowhere in the rendering until we talked for a half hour did anybody explain that the westernmost portion of the property was going to be publicly held while the eastern portion was going to be vacated and owned by the Arts District. And then this no man's land in the middle that we're discussing about maybe or maybe not letting people through, I think that's absolutely, as an old park guy, I'd say that's crazy, I wouldn't allow it and I won't vote for it. But I, back to what I said initially, I think you've got an excellent plan that needs to be presented in a different fashion. Maybe all the renderings all put together because we were looking at drawings that didn't show the end result. I'll, I'll be glad to show you what I've got presented in the two items, which are what being technically as staff was required to present, but they gave me no clue as to what they actually meant in terms of importance or significance to the overall Arts District project nor the, nor the Arts Plaza. And so I would make a motion to table this item for two weeks or a month and let you come back with another presentation that I could aggressively support. You know, at this point, I'm just saying, I agree, we don't know, it's too confusing.
And I, and I just want to say that I think that these gentlemen would, would probably, you know, love to work with you because they've got a lot vested in there and they know, they know he got a good thing, but we just don't have enough information, I don't. And if he doesn't, we really don't, so that's how I feel.
Thank you. Applicant, are you okay with that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Commissioner Trowbridge, you want to go ahead and try to craft that?
Yes, at this point, I'd like to make a motion on item number 14 to table the item for-
Is it table or wait? Hold it for 30 days or?
Hold it for 30 days? Is that adequate for you to get together and get the renderings all on one piece of paper?
The sooner the better for us. I mean, like I said, it's been two and a half years trying to open this bar.
Okay, well, it's, you know-
And unlike other folks, we are financed and ready to go and waiting for this and we've been trying to jump through these hoops for years now. So the sooner we can, we can filter this the better.
To March 9? Okay, could you, could you be ready for the, the 13th and you have to submit renderings in term, time for staff to get them ready? Okay, so we make a motion, we hold this until March 13th?
Motion's on the floor to hold till March 13th, please cast your vote. And that motion has passed with Commissioner Evans abstaining.
And in regard to item number 15, vacation 26443, make a motion to hold that to the March 13th meeting also?
Motion on the floor to hold to March 13th, please cast your vote. Thank you, that has been held. Mr. Solomon, Mr. Drum, you now have 30 days between, or till, you have about two weeks till March 13th to get together with this gentleman and be able to, to work your differences out and we'll see you at the meeting then. Thank you. We're going to move on to our, we're going to go on to item 16, VAC 26442, applicant A and P Engineering, owner CS4015 LLC, petition to vacate 20-foot public drainage easement at 10591 West Lone Mountain Road. Staff?
This vacation is necessary to allow the applicant to develop the site as proposed under a previously approved site plan, staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Applicant?
Yes, my name's Scott Anderson with A and P Engineering, 810 Gallego Court, and we agree to the, the conditions and ask for approval.
Thank you very much. We'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions by the board? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion on item 16.
In regard to item number 16, vacation 26442, subject to all staff conditions, recommend approval.
Motion on the floor for approval, cast your votes. And that motion has been approved.
You go to counsel on April 2nd.
That concludes our, our one motion, one vote items that were pulled, we'll move on to the public hearing items. Item 19, GPA 25892, applicant owner SF Investments LLC from MLA medium-low attached density residential to M medium-density residential at the southeast corner of Lone Mountain Road and US 95. Also related items 20, 21, and 22. Item 20, ZON 25893, from RE Residential Estates and U undeveloped MLA medium-low attached general plan designation to R3 medium-density residential. Please note that the RE residential estate portion of this application is under resolution of intent to RPD 10 residential plan development, 10 units per acre. Item 21, VAR 26228, to allow a residential adjacency setback of 20 feet where 91 feet is required at the southeast corner, or at the southeast property line for a 248-unit apartment complex. Please note the RE residential estate portion of this application is under resolution of intent to RPD 10, 10 units per acre, and to allow a residential adjacency setback of 70 feet where 90 feet is required at the southeast property line. Item 22, SDR 25894, for a 252-unit apartment complex. And also please note again, as repeated, that the portion of this application under resolution of intent to RPD 10, plan development, 10 units per acre. Staff?
First, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain on these items because I, my partner of mine is a owner of property within the notice area, while I don't think it affects anything, I just, as a matter of caution.
Thank you. Staff?
In regard to the general plan amendment and rezoning, staff finds densities to be not compatible with the existing single-family residential uses to the south and east. In regard to the residential adjacency variance, staff notes the applicant has reduced the amount of the request of variance from 20 to 70 feet, but finds that the development is too intense for the site. Staff recommends denial of all applications.
Thank you. Applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Commissioners, good evening. I'm Bob Gronauer, 3800 Howard Hughes Parkway, and I'm here representing the applicant and property owner in this matter. The first thing that I'd like to do is get you familiar, familiar with the location of the property. And if you could take a look on the overhead here, as you can see, our property is highlighted in green in this area. It is approximately 11 and a half acres of property. Just to the west of us adjacent is US 95. To the north of us is Lone Mountain, this is Lone Mountain Overpass. On the other side of Lone Mountain is the Santa Fe Hotel and Casino. Over in this area, you have some existing homes that is currently master planned in Clark County in the Centennial Hills Plan as office. This is Balsam, which is somewhat adjacent to our site here, and then just to the south of our property is Red Coach. So this gives you a pretty good idea where the property is actually located. The, the next thing I do want to show you, as I mentioned, is the land use plan in this area, if we could zoom in, or maybe not, but if anything, if you could take a look here and, and believe me, this area here is crosshatched and is in the color pink, as you can see, which would include our property and the surrounding properties that I've shown you on the aerial to the east and to the south of us, it's all master planned for office, although there's some single-family existing homes in this area. As, if you're familiar with this area, it's under a transition with respect to new development and I just wanted to put, point this out to you with respect to the land use planning in the general vicinity. The next thing that I'd like to show you is on the overhead here is, there's been some history on this property and we can zoom out now a little bit. First of all, you may recall this piece of property about two years ago, of March in 2005, actually about three years ago, the applicant and property owner came before you requesting for a residential development, the medium-low attached, which is on the property today, was approved. It was changed from office professional to medium-low attached, which allows up to about 10, 10 dwelling units to the acre. As you may recall, initially they had about eight and a half acres of property that I'm showing you in this area. This was approved for a town home concept, up to about 10 dwelling units to the acre. And if you can see here with respect to setbacks with the condos, excuse me, the town homes, these are fourplexes, you can see how close to the property line these, this development was actually approved, subject to two-story residential units. Back in May, two months later, this parcel, these two or three parcels here and this property here was purchased and annexed into the city of Las Vegas, which now comes into a combination of, from, growing from an eight and a half acre piece of property to about 11 and a half piece of property that's before you today. And then subsequent to the annexation here, another site plan was approved for a small lot, single-family residential development, which had two-story homes that were separated approximately seven feet apart because there were three and a half foot side yard setbacks with the six-foot rear yard with respect to the development itself. And then three years later, we're standing here before you requesting for the change into the master plan itself and the change is from medium-low attached to medium-density. The medium-density here, if we could zoom out, I'll show you the proposed multifamily development here. The multifamily development itself is allowed under the medium-density. We feel based on the, some of the factors that I told you in the beginning of the presentation here, that warrants the approval to be compatible and appropriate in this area for this type of use because we're adjacent to US 95, we're, to the north of us is Lone Mountain Overpass, and more importantly, this area is planned by both the county and the city for future office development in this area. With that being said, we are also coming in with a zone change. Currently on the property as staff has mentioned- Currently on the property as staff has mentioned, you have an RPD-10, which allows up to 10.49, 10.5 dwelling units to the acre. That is for the existing project that I've already explained to you that has already been approved and is mapped on the property for the single-family small-lot subdivision. And then next, what I'd like to get into is what I think is really the most important part of the application is the site development plan and the variance of what we're asking for. What I have here, as you're looking on the overhead here, is the initial site plan. The initial site plan that I have before you came in at 256 dwelling units. And more importantly, the variance that we'll be discussing here for the residential adjacency standards was being requested at five feet where ninety-one feet is required. And more importantly, if I could point up into this area here at this location, this is exactly where the five-foot residential... Five-foot setback variance was being requested. But one of the things I do want to point out to you, if you're familiar with this area, there is an existing daycare facility right adjacent to us. So although it's zoned RE, and we still... Because it's RE, we still have to meet the residential adjacency standards, it is a commercial use on that property. So one of the things that we've done since meeting with the neighbors in the area, based on the requirements when you come in with the general plan amendment, we've made some changes to the plan itself. As you can see here, this is the revised plan. And one of the first things that I do want to point out to you, by making some of the changes to increase the separation between the residentially-zoned properties and the buildings itself, we lost a total of eight additional units. So as staff has mentioned, we are now asking for 248 dwelling units on the property itself. More importantly, we've increased the setbacks and the residential adjacency standards. The minimum setback is 70 feet where 91 feet is required. If you take a look up in this area, one of the areas that I pointed out, previously, we had five feet, and we were within about 15 feet from the existing single-family home that's located here. We've increased the setbacks in this area, and we meet those setback requirements pursuant to code. Some of the things that we don't meet the residential adjacency standards is for the area in this area here, as I'm showing you on the east portion of our property, is we're about 70 feet from the residential property line to the building itself. The other areas that we're short, we have 80 feet to Building 16, 85 feet to Building 15. But one of the things I do want to point out to you before I conclude my presentation that we do have support from this resident and this property owner right here with respect to the design that we are proposing. And we also have approval or a letter in support from the property owner that lives on this house right here with respect to developments. And then the only other area where we do encroach with respect to residential adjacency standard is on the southern building located down here. From the building to the back property line is 70 feet in that area. We do feel we do have a legal hardship here as part of the variance. You need to prove it. And typically, a legal hardship is when you have to address a piece of property such as what's in front of you. This is not a perfect square. This is not a perfect rectangle. If anything, it's a very narrow piece of property located in here, and it's odd shape as it goes up around there, which, as you know, makes it very difficult to develop and meet all the code requirements when you're coming in to design a project such as this. So we believe that we did a very good job in working with the code and trying to address the residential adjacency standards by increasing the setbacks in those areas. And more importantly, we did get some people in support in speaking to the neighbors in the general vicinity. If you can take a look on the overhead here, you can see in the blue as it's outlined, we went out and we have some letters that we turned in to your staff of some letters in support for the project itself of what we are proposing. That being said, I can answer any other questions that you may have here.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Anybody for or against the item, please come forward at this time. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Robert Eagle, 4686 Balsam Street. I am opposed to all of this, as we have been for three years. Vice Chairman, I want to thank you for... With that arcs, when you defended the public... The private property, that's refreshing. Thank you very much. I have some quick pictures that I took of the property. My neighbors and I are probably naive enough over this past three years to feel as though that our CCNRs, the zoning in the county master plan would defend... Logic would defend us from having this invasion in our neighborhood of apartments or condominiums, if you will. And it has escalated to almost a personal nature, especially with me. The pictures are up.
The pictures that you're seeing here I took today from the Lone Mountain Overpass looking south. This is the amount of fill that has been brought into this property. Now, this started three years ago. Why I'm showing this, this area, according to the county and the city flood control, was our private little retention basin. So that being said, when it rains, that's where the water would pump. This is the house that they've purchased that's been sitting like that for almost three years, and more fill. This is my house. That is sandbags across my driveway. My home sits lower than the street. I brought this to the city's intention. On May 11th of 2006, I sent a letter that has yet to be answered. I think we've made five attempts or more to get an answer on the flood study. Nothing. This is a homemade bridge so I can get in and out of my driveway, over my sandbags. I don't...
Is that there today?
Right. I took that... Well, these pictures, this one I took this morning, yeah. That's how I got out of my driveway today.
Thank you.
That's how I do it every day.
Thank you.
There's a few more. The... And I'll be glad to leave the letter with you. Do you want me to put the letter up?
Please submit it to the clerk.
Here's the... That's the flood study? That's flawed. What happened with the flood study that SNF, Mr. Lesman did, is they claimed that they tried to get access to our properties to shoot our elevations of our slabs. They never did. So when I talked with the city, the explanation was is that when they turn in their flood study with no elevations of existing home slabs, the city assumes that the home slabs are above or at street level. That's not the case. So it's been almost two years, I can't get an answer.
There's another picture.
On that part.
And I think that's another case for another time. I want you to kind of keep...
Well, I'm trying to give you a history of what's going on here.
Yeah, but I'm going to get you some help on that driveway, too.
There's an email with Councilman Brown's representatives. They were working with us real well for a couple of days, and then I think somebody decided to look into the... How much money's gone into it?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to interrupt for just a moment if I can.
Commissioner?
Sir, I need you to tell me... I'm assuming you disagree with it. I think you said so.
Correct.
And maybe you can tell me real quickly why, because I'm getting a little lost in the details. Is it because of the flood? Is it because of the density?
They've held us up for three years. Why didn't he go ahead and build when he had the approval? Why is he changing it? Every time... This has gone on for three years. They won't play by the rules. They want variances, they want all these different changes, they want... They came in and changed our CCNRs. We've spent $10,000 on a lawyer. We lost a summary judgment to these people. I mean, they've invaded our neighborhood and just pushed us around to the point of tears. They devalued our property. I couldn't sell my property like that. I couldn't give it away. Okay?
Give you about 30 more seconds to wrap it up.
All right. I had to purchase flood insurance for my home on top of all this. The city approved this project. You guys graciously disapproved it before. One of our concerns is the north end of Balsam Street, the cul-de-sac. When the city approved the Santa Fe Hotel, they said they would never, ever have access to Lone Mountain because we were concerned about the traffic. A year later, Santa Fe came back, and they got approval, and they have access. We need some assurance from this council, if you do approve this or the city does approve it. We needed a condition of approval that no traffic from any development over there goes up and down Balsam Street. Now, we had an agreement, I thought, prior to this with the developer where we were going to vacate Balsam Street. They were going to give it back to the owners so this would stop any of that. Because I believe it was Councilman Mack that told us that he was not going to have to adhere to the conditions of prior councilmen or something to that effect. But we need some assurances on a condition of approval that we won't have to put up with the traffic. I'm sure they're going to approve something on this. And the lesser of the two evils would be the master plan. We already have an office building going in at the corner of Red Coach and Balsam. I think my neighbors and I would rather have that so we could at least have our weekends as opposed to having apartments.
Thank you very much. Andy, could you grab the microphone for this gentleman, please? Andy?
Hey, Andy. Sorry. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for this time. My name is Ken Rogers. I live at 4668 Balsam Street, next door to Mr. Eagle. I would first like to thank whoever that was that spoke at the beginning saying they were against these changes. I appreciate your interest in that. There seems to be a few... I don't know. I don't know all of the facts and figures. I'm not... But when they first started this three years ago, seems to be like there were only seven acres. And he said there were... The other gentleman said there was over eight, something. A moot question, maybe. But anyway, this particular street and development, the Bridle Path Estates, has been there for a long, 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 long time. One gentleman, Mr. Gallegos, is here, has been there 40 years. Mr. Eagle has been there some almost 30 years. I'm a newcomer. I've only been on that street for seven years. We are against it because we got a lot of promises, and they don't seem to follow through. So as far as any of the proposals here, I am definitely very much against them, and I appreciate your time and thought. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Sir, you can use this microphone here if you want.
My name is Dan Gallegos, and I live at 4661 Balsam Street, right across from Mr. Rogers. And I'm against this project because of all the bull that goes with it. They can't figure out what they're going to do one day from the next. One day, Mr. Lesman owns the property, and a week later, he doesn't. So... And I think it's just too much density in there for what they're trying to put in there.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Farlow?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I'd like Mr. Gronauer to show us where the open space is on this project, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to comment during the public hearing? I'll close the public hearing. At this time, we'll hear from the applicant.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm going to address the concerns as they were laid out from the beginning to the end here. First of all, I believe with Mr. Eagle's concerns with, number one, the drainage on the property. As you know, there is no existing development on the property itself today. One of the conditions for not just this development, but for all development, you are required to do a drainage study. The drainage study will dictate how the flows are going to come onto the property and how those flows will go off the property in that area. So with respect to the drainage problem that's there today, that may also be a concern with other vacant properties out there because, as you know, those drainage issues will not be resolved until you get development. And development cannot be done at any point in time until you get the city to sign off on those drainage issues. The second thing is, and I believe this is... It was a common theme between three of the neighbors who are here in opposition, is I mentioned this project has been going on for a very long time. Unfortunately, yes, if this project, as approved in 2005, as I laid out to you, was approved and was not appealed and litigated by the neighbors, you would have those developments already happening that was already approved on the plan itself in 2005. Unfortunately, through litigation, trying to work the issues out with the neighbors in the area, has delayed the project for the construction. And as you know how the economic times are, things change, circumstances change. The third thing is with respect to Balsam. I was not privy to those conversations as far as making Balsam 100% vacated. But there's one thing with this project that we did that in the initial stages of the project itself did not have, and I can show you here on this site plan, because this is the initial site plan that was approved at eight and a half acres without the purchase of these properties or this property here. If you take a look at this site plan, this is Balsam. Balsam had access to the north, getting out in Lone Mountain, all the way down to the south to Red Coach. So with the approval of the first project, Balsam, you had access going out to Lone Mountain, which means people from Lone Mountain could drive down to Balsam into this neighborhood. The way we have the project designed today, and after subsequent purchases of the parcels and annexation into the city of Las Vegas, one of the things that we've done, if you could zoom out, please, we did vacate Balsam in this area, Balsam going out to Lone Mountain. So I believe that at least addresses the gentleman's concerns with respect to having traffic driving into Balsam or driving south down Balsam into the neighborhood. As a matter of fact, with respect to Red Coach, which is located right here, you see this ingress egress area, it's actually a crash gate. That's the whole purpose there. You can condition it and require it only to be a crash gate in case if something happens with respect to the Santa Fe issue right there with their crash gate. It's the intent to keep this development access, as you can see, further north here as I'm showing you, out onto Lone Mountain. You're going to get ingress and egress in that area. So that should address the gentleman's concern. We cannot control Balsam to be vacated here. This is under separate property ownership. The neighbors would have to get together to vacate Balsam and make it a private street. That's a whole different discussion, a whole different issue for another day. But I think we... I believe we addressed the traffic issue also. And then the last bit that I'd like to just address with you is, as I mentioned earlier before, and I think Mr. Rogers has mentioned about the annexation, started off at eight and a half acres. And as you can see here with the subsequent purchases of the property itself, obviously, we now have the 11 and a half acres. I don't think I need to go any further into detail there with respect to the growth of the property itself. So Commissioners, I believe the project that we have before you is appropriate in this area with respect to the circumstances and the design and the details that we put in here to try to make sure we give enough protection. We do have some people who are immediately adjacent in support, as I told you. With that being said, I could answer any questions that you may have.
I have a couple. So what you've done by vacating the Balsam, you've improved the site. Were you representing this application from the beginning?
No.
Okay.
Our office got involved somewhere in the middle in '05. We were not the representative in the beginning of the application when it first became... Came before the planning commission. I would say we probably got involved subsequent to at the city council level. We, I believe, handled the litigation matter, et cetera, and so on from there.
Can you address the open space on the site?
Yes, I'm sorry about that. I'm sorry, Mr. Farlow. The open spaces, you can see here, first of all, with respect to open space and amenities, we're providing recreational facility, a pool and spa area located here. Obviously, within the recreational center, you have your other amenities in there, which is a TV room, weight room, et cetera. We do have various open space areas where you have barbecue pits in the area itself, as I'm pointing out. We do have an additional pool located here and some other amenities. So on the plan itself, there is no question as to whether or not we don't meet the open space requirements. We do meet the open space requirements per the city municipal code.
Thank you very much. Comments or questions from the board? Commissioner Dunham?
Yes, Mr. Gronauer. I realize that you're an attorney, and you're a very good attorney, and you get paid about a dollar a word for your answers. But I only have $3 here. So what I want to know is, is do you have an approved drainage study? Do you have an approved dust permit? And do you have an approved grading permit for any portion of this property where we see...
It's another buck, Sam. I'll loan it to you.
Before we go further, how can that occur? For the staff, perhaps? If there's grading on the property, isn't that required prior?
Staff? Public Works?
Yes, certainly, we would have expected to approve a drainage study for grading takes place.
Yeah, I think we need to pop these guys for moving dirt out there.
What about me?
I'm going to certainly take us back to the office and consult with my flood control section to get an answer on how this works going on.
Okay. Any more questions or comments from the board?
Yeah. I would imagine they would, I would speculate and say that they're probably not grading, they're storing dirt, the way they've mounted it. The issues that were brought up, talk about, you know, the flood control measures, can't go away, critically important, is going to require it to be done to city code. It's stipulated as condition number 27 on the site development review. The request that there be no access going on to Balsam, I think has been addressed with the provision that there's going to be a cul-de-sac where it terminates in a cul-de-sac on the northern end. The traffic has also been addressed by requiring all access to the parcel and from the parcel to be through Lone Mountain. And that the southern portion exit only be through a crash gate, which would be for public safety purposes. So I think some of the issues have been addressed. But in addition, a couple of points were brought up that I think haven't been given any light. One of them is says that there's two projects that have already been approved there. One of them is the density is being RPD 10, and that's already been approved. A second project you described is two-story dwellings that have a six-foot rear setback and three and a half feet on the sides, and that's already been approved?
Yes.
Now, I realize that the homeowners out there have invested $10,000 in trying to litigate this matter, this project, and has contributed to the delay. A silver lining might be that that $10,000 had a net result of what I consider to be a far superior project to one that had R10 and two-story buildings six foot from the back of the property line. I think that is a, the, those two projects together, when you look at them compared to this project, this project is far superior. Having the open space met, drainage condition is going to be addressed, you know, I really don't have any particular problems with the projects. Anybody else have any?
I have a couple.
Commissioner Evans?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. The gentleman, I think it was the first gentleman who spoke.
Mr. Eagle?
I didn't get the name. The gentleman with the sandbags getting in and out of his driveway. I'm curious, was that always the case or is it because of development in the area that has created that problem? Or, I know the public hearing's closed, so.
Well, I'll, Mr. Eagle, I'll allow you to come on up to the mic. I don't think I need, Mr. Attorney? Is he in the back? I don't think I need to open the public hearing, he just wants to answer the Commissioner's question. Thank you.
No, that was not always the case. The case is, I was trying to, I'm not as good as you are, I'm sorry. I went to a different college.
I just want quick answers.
The quick answer is no. Because that area where I showed you they piled all the dirt and graded in there the past two and a half years was where the water sat. And if you check with your flood people, they'll tell you that, that the water moves across there and is in Benny's backyard and it stops. And I've never had an issue. But once I saw where all that was piled up, that water was going to have to go somewhere if we had heavy rain. And I figured it was my living.
So the prior grading of the site or the prior from a long time ago created this?
No, what they brought in. They brought in like eight foot of fill.
In the last few months?
In the last two years.
In the last two years.
Right.
From previous approvals, from previous applications?
I don't know that. And that was, I was talking with Councilman Brown's office about that, and then I never did get a reply.
Because one of the things that has concerned me, and I know that with all due respect to Public Works, we have that whole area of the northwest, every time there's even a modest flash flood or rain, I see on the television the water raging down the streets and in many cases, running into people's homes and for all intents and purposes, destroying them or at least substantially damaging them. And then I hear it said that, well, our system for flood control is working. And that's what it's designed to do, is to channel the water down the streets. And I'm thinking, maybe I'm missing something here. Because I'm not the brightest bulb in the chandelier, but I'm not sure, I'm not dim with it either.
If the newer homes. The newer homes are built up, like my neighbor's house. His house is almost four foot higher than mine. My home was built in 1964. And so they didn't have that requirement at that time. Matter of fact, the street wasn't even paved at that time.
No, I understand that. I guess what I'm saying is that, I know we do these studies, and yet whenever we have even a modest amount of rain, I see substantial flooding. And I, that alarms me because I know that if I were to have purchased a home many years ago and then as a consequence of development around me, the closing of the auroras and et cetera, and I know we have these retention basins, but I also think that, you know, the rain that we get may create a problem. And I want to make sure that the people who live out there are protected in the measure that we can provide some level of protection. Maybe someone can answer that?
Commissioner Evans, through, what I'm going to direct staff to do after this is to get together with Mr. Ingle. I was just sitting here thinking, maybe if this is approved through the construction process, maybe he can work in concert with these folks and to be able to mitigate some of his issues with the driveway. Gina?
Well, yeah, that may work, but, you know, I'm not comfortable saying yes and then say work together and, you know.
But I don't think we're going to solve the regional flood problem.
No, but we're looking at a simple item. So I'm not looking for softballs here. I'm looking for answers.
Right. And actually, when it does rain and we do get the floods and you see the homes where it's coming up into the homes, and a lot of cases, that is in the rural, the rural portions of unincorporated Clark County, County Islands, and those portions of the city where we have allowed rural streets to go in without curb and gutter in place, I can think of several examples where a lot of custom style homes on larger lots just have asphalt paving. And older homes, as he mentioned, you know, they didn't have requirements to be built, you know, so high above the flood elevation of the water. So although we have definitely made major improvements in the flooding in the area, there certainly are still those cases, especially on the rural streets where the flooding is still quite bad.
So Gina, in your opinion, and I don't mean to put you on the spot.
It's okay.
But if this were approved, would it create any worse of a situation for this gentleman?
It would not in the long term. Once the project is fully built out, certainly they will be installing whatever storm facilities are necessary, such as underground piping. They will, the staff will ensure that all of the water is contained on site, within the private drives, outletted most likely to Lone Mountain, carried in Lone Mountain where it's supposed to be where our storm drain facilities are in place. So it will definitely improve after construction. It's during this interim phase where the problems are going to arise.
And that brings me to my next, last question is that, I know, I don't know what's involved in getting grading permits and that sort of thing. But I know that dust abatement, I thought you had to have a plan whenever you move dirt. And I get alarmed because every time there's a minor wind, anywhere the soil has been disturbed unless it's being watered or properly treated, you end up with particulate matter in the air. And that affects the quality of the air in the entire valley.
Absolutely.
So I.
Absolutely. I am concerned with everything that's been discussed here tonight on the site. And as I said, I am going to take this back first thing tomorrow and get with my flood control section and find out what's been going on. I don't have any documentation that a flood study has been even submitted to our department.
Okay. And see, that gives me a pause, some pause in terms of, you know, the, again, I'm not a developer, but, I mean, in that world, I would think that that would be known to even the smallest of developers.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Eagle, let me hold, let me guide you here. Mr. Gurnhour, then we'll have one more comment, and then I'm going to have to ask you to sit down.
There's just one point that I do want to make. I'm not going to stand up here and tell you I know how much fill was put on the property between three years ago and today and if permits were pulled or not. There's one thing that as I'm standing up here that I realize, if you take a look at the aerial here, the one thing that we need to understand is, and I, and I'm going to try to use some logic, I'm not an engineer here, is this is the property here where the alleged stockpiling is and the additional dirt is located. I believe Mr. Eagle lives over here on this side of Balsam. My concern is, and I believe as Public Works said, is you have these issues in these rural neighborhood areas. Today, you have Balsam. Balsam is a through street. You're going to have water carrying down there. If water was coming off this side of the property here, flooding, you would have flooding issues with the properties that are immediately adjacent, not on the east side of Balsam. Again, I just want to make that point because I think when you look at the site plan itself, it looks like our property and stockpiling is actually out on Balsam. It isn't. These are homes. Some of them, some people live in them, some people don't, but these are existing homes. So those are the people that if there's flooding coming from the property, I would presume it's coming across their property, across Balsam there, which I find it hard to believe. But then again, it is what we're showing you.
Downhill, and I sit lower than those people do. See, that's the problem. It migrates, their houses sit higher than the street.
Right.
Mine sits lower. So if it runs across their property and across Balsam, then it would flood my home. We haven't had that heavy rain yet. I put the sandbags at my expense and the bridge and the flood insurance up to protect my property in case we do have that.
Yeah, so that you don't have to in the middle of the night run out there.
Would you allow me one seed to plant, sir? Just one?
Mr. Eagle, I'm going to allow you one.
Okay.
And that's going to be it. We could go on.
The seed I would like to plant is this, is that the cul-de-sac, the way it's designed, with the crash gates, when you have 200 people trying to egress that property in the morning to go to work, and they look through those crash gates and they see Balsam Street empty, they're going to be down seeing the good mayor raising all kinds of cane, and they're going to open those crash gates. That's what we're trying to stop. Because we were right when we said that the traffic was bad on Lone Mountain for the Santa Fe. And that was 10 or 15 years ago. Now we have the same issue again. And we're trying to stop that from ever happening to us with his property.
But that's still going to have to be a request that's made. Commissioner Steiman?
Thank you. We've spent a lot of time on the problems with their properties, and I really sympathize with them. But I think Balsam needs to be redesigned. I mean, that is really the issue here, that you need a redesign of your street so this doesn't occur. And I don't know when that's going to happen. But I will say.
Mr. Steiman, let me interrupt that.
Sure.
Just a point of clarification, that Balsam Street is located in the county, it's not city street.
All right, I understand. But it needs to be redesigned at some point. That's my point. Or he's going to continue to have this mess that he has building a bridge into his house, which I don't think is rightly fair for him. But I will say this, this property, in my opinion, backing up to a very busy freeway, is a very good buffer type of property. And once the drainage is solved on it, and we know where all these piles of dirt came from and so on, this is an excellent thing to put into this site. Going out on a very busy street of Lone Mountain, along a freeway, it is good buffering. And it's good planning to do it this way. So I'm going to support this particular item.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments on this item?
Yeah, real quick, Mr. Eagle, I know that Mr. Gurnhour said he was not an engineer, but I am. And you're probably not going to believe me on this, but if this apartment project gets built, it's going to alleviate your flooding problems. It's going to, it's going to reduce the amount of storm water that comes off of that property. And the reason that is, is because that property either has to drain north to Lone Mountain or south to Red Coach. It cannot drain east across private property. So whatever that 11 acres is now will not drain east or west until it hits Red Coach or Lone Mountain. So this project going in will help you. You may not believe that, but that's the way it is. And because of that, I'm going to support this because it is going to help you in the long run.
Is that a motion? Or we'll entertain a motion at this time?
I'll make a motion. On GPA 25892, move for approval, subject to conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval, please cast your vote.
That makes it.
That motion has been approved. Item 20.
Item number 20, ZON 25893, move for approval, subject to conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval, please cast your vote. That motion has been approved with Commissioner Truesdale abstaining.
Item number 21, VAR 26228, move for approval, subject to conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 21, please cast your votes. That motion has been approved with Commissioner Truesdale abstaining. Item 22.
SDR 25894, move for approval, subject to all conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval, please cast your vote. And that motion has been approved with Commissioner Truesdale abstaining. Also show that Commissioner Truesdale did abstain on item 19 as well. Mr. Eagle, Gina, do you have a card? If you could please.
Mr. Chairman, what I'm going to do, because I wasn't aware of these dumping issues, I will make a commitment to work with Public Works and the neighbors in this area to resolve whatever we need to resolve. So I do apologize for that because I wasn't aware of maybe these issues on this property. Okay?
Thank you.
Mr. Gurnhour?
I'll manage to go over to the council on April 2nd.
Commissioner Quinn, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to say that I know you're a man of your word, and those houses really mean a lot to those people, so really follow through. Thanks.
Next items, 23 through 26. I will be abstaining on these items as I do own property within the notice area. I'll turn these items over to Vice Chairman Trowbridge.
Item number 25, Avance's General Plan Amendment 23, General Plan Amendment 25905, General Plan Amendment, public hearing. The applicant owner is KB Homes Nevada, Inc., et al. It's a request to amend a portion of Centennial Hill Sector Plan from desert rural density residential to low-density residential on 30.2 acres at the northeast corner of Iron Mountain Road and Leon Avenue. Companion items number 24, Zone Change 25906. It's a rezoning related to the General Plan Amendment 25905. This is the public hearing. The applicant owner is KB Homes Nevada, Inc., et al. It's a request for a rezoning from residential estates to RPD 4 of residential plan development, four units per acre on 30.2 acres at the northeast corner of Iron Mountain Road and Leon Avenue. Item number 25 is Vacation 25907. It's a vacation related to General Plan Amendment 25905 and zoning 25906. Public hearing, applicant owner is Ferenc Talaf, Family and Martyrial Trust, et al. Petition to vacate a portion of public right-of-way. It's only located at the northeast corner of Iron Mountain Road and Leon Avenue. And item number 26 is Site Development Review 25908, related to General Plan 25905, zoning 25906, and Vacation 25907. This is the public hearing. The applicant owner is KB Homes Nevada, Inc., et al. It's a request for a site development plan review for a 126-unit residential plan development on 30.2 acres at the northeast corner of Iron Mountain Road and Leon Road, Leon Avenue, I'm sorry. Staff report, please.
The densities proposed under this request are not compatible with the residential development to the west and north. Staff recommends denial.
Thank you. Applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, Commissioners Bob Genzer, Genzer Consulting, Las Vegas, Nevada, along with Mr. Josh Johnson of GC Wallace Engineering, Las Vegas, on behalf of the applicant. I'd like to go to the overhead and first show you what the site plan was a month ago when we were before you. As you'll recall, we had an application for 118, excuse me, 126. As you'll recall, we had an application for 118, excuse me, 126, single-family lots, which was on 30 acres, which was a density of 4.17 dwelling units per acre. At that time, in addition to discussion on the density, we also talked about the location of the open space area, and you directed us to come up with a site plan that was more innovative and in accord with the RPD requirements. So that is what we have tried to do and would like to present to you this evening. What you're now looking at is the revised site plan. We have reduced the number of lots from 126 to 118, which reduces the density from 4.17 to 3.91. In addition, we have reduced the number of lots along Leon from 14 to 11, and increased the size of those lots to 8,000 square feet, which actually makes them slightly larger than the existing lots on the west side of the street that back up to Leon. We have also moved the open space area to be more centralized in the development with access for the lots along Leon here and for the lots along Honey Creek here. We also tried to put some curvature into the street design. It's a little bit hard to see, but those streets are not as straight as they once were. With a square site, it was pretty hard to come up with much more than that. Again, the homes, let me say that approximately a week after the last hearing, staff contacted us and indicated that we had to submit floor plans and elevations as part of this application. We have done that. We have three homes that, plans that were submitted, one-story and two, two stories. Those homes start at approximately 2,450 square feet and go up with options to around 5,000 square feet on the larger two-story, and I believe you have those in your packets. The, as I said, the homes will be one- and two-story, the 35-foot maximum height with that, in that two-story home. No change as far as the vacation application, that is again simply excess right-of-way. We believe that this density does fit this area. It is approximately one-half unit per acre more than the existing subdivisions to the west and the north. With that, I think I'm just going to step aside, let you open the public hearing, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that may come up.
Thank you, I'll do just that. Public hearing is now declared open. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter, please approach the microphone and form two lines and leave the tomatoes back in the seats. So if we're, okay, we're going to be, have a lot of people that would like to speak, so we'll ask the city clerk to put the timer on at three minutes, and we would ask those that are going to make presentations to try to avoid repetition. If someone has already brought out a point, just say, "I agree with the previous speaker" and bring out the new stuff if you would. So first, if you'd like to give your name and address for the record.
My name is Stacy Henry, 8820, Monte Oro. I back up to this property, and I'd like to make note that it's not KB Homes. This is nothing to do with KB Homes. It's, I guess, a private developer from California. Second, I would like to see it be consistent with what's over on the north side of Iron Mountain Road. As you can see, everybody up there, all the properties are RPD 3, and the lots, I would like to see stay in that zoning. So that's what I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Yes, I live, I'm Nick Uchin, I live at 9020 Sawhill Pond Street in Carmel Canyon. I live in the annexed community, which is front-facing the shooting park. If you recall, I was here the last time this was presented. And the only comment I have to make, I've seen such precision here tonight in terms of looking at small things, in terms of a truck being able to get into someone's property, I'm baffled. I'm still baffled by how you could put a 3,000-acre shooting park 2,500 feet from our home.
Does that have anything to do with this item, sir?
It does, and the reason it does is because I want more responsible growth, and something that's not compatible like this in terms of density is not responsible growth. The only other comment that I'd like to make in terms of responsible growth is how they put the entrance to the shooting park next to Shadow Ridge High School after we see all these school shootings taking place. And as I said, this is all part of responsible growth in this density I object to. That's my only comment.
Next?
My name is Richard Leonard. I live at 5844 Ponderosa Verde Place in the adjacent community at Carmel Canyon, and I agree with everything Nick said. However, I think they should have three houses per acre or less to coincide with what we have. Anything more dense than that would not coincide with what we have. Also, they have a 2,450, which is a smaller house, square foot house than we have. So if you approve that particular type of home, you're lowering again our property values. So they should be a minimum compatible to us in their home sites and in the buildings that they put up.
What is the, sir, if you would, what's the largest size home in your development? 4,000?
Yes, the smallest is 2,475.
So what he's proposing is somewhat smaller and some larger.
No, what I'm saying is, our smallest house is 2,475, they're proposing 2,450. It's not a smaller house, it would be less costly for someone to purchase that than our homes.
But if he was to build a 5,000-square-foot house, it would be more valuable than your homes, right?
It would still put a lesser value at home there. We want to maintain.
So the 5,000?
Right. We have other problems, as Nick said. What we want is compatible. We have, we have houses going up to like 800,000. All right? We want the same type of community built next to us that we have, nothing less. So we're against it, and we're against four houses per acre.
Thank you. You're welcome. To the west.
My name is Lorraine Leonard, I live at 5844 Ponderosa Verde Place. I agree with all the statements so far. We're concerned about our home values. The RJ just reported that in our zip code, home values are down 13%. We anticipate that the shooting park is going to further decrease our values, and this project would even more depreciate our values. So we want at least PD 3. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Hello, my name is Joan Uchin, I reside at 9020 Sawhill Pond Street, and I agree with everything that's been said. I strongly oppose this. We are being bombarded and attacked up in the northwest by all of this rezoning. Please keep it zoned as it was and help us, the homeowners, which is our largest asset for us, our children, our grandchildren. Please do not rezone this, keep it as it was originally zoned. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
My name is Jeff Goulian, I live at 8909 Monte Oro Drive. Just wanna go on record saying I oppose the entire thing, and please do not rezone it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Levert Davis, 8816 Monte Oro Drive, and I'm opposed to it. And if you decide to agree with them, at least keep the zonings, the setbacks and everything as same as Greystone, you know, the houses that we live in. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Teresa Nolan, I live at 9108 Sandstone Ravine in Carmel Canyon. I echo all of my neighbors' comments, they are looking for an RPD 4. I would like to respectfully request an RPD 3 be maintained so that we can at least maintain some of our semblance of being in a rural community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
My name is Loretta Thomas, I live at 8824 Monte Oro Drive. Leon Avenue is in back of my home, and I'm also opposing the plans by KB Home. I feel as though this would greatly bring down the value of my home and surrounding property, and I ask that you disapprove this. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Hi, I'm Noreen Goulian, I live at 8909 Monte Oro Drive, and I'm here for the same reasons. We work very hard, we do not want to see a depreciation in the value of our homes, and it's a huge concern. We would like to stay with the PD 3. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
And last, I guess, my name is Alvin Thomas, and I also live at 8824 Monte Oro Drive. I also have an investment with the, with the Loretta Thomas for that piece of property that, that board is up against Leon, which is right across the street from this proposed development. And I understand that the proposed development is originally cited for PD 3 homes, and I want to request that it remains PD 3 homes or lower, whichever one will suit the, will suit the board. This property directly behind us, I've seen a lot of things go on in that property, and I would like to see it get developed because, I mean, there's a lot of traffic along Leon Drive late at night with kids on motorcycles and stuff like this. A fence has been put up to stop some of it, but we still get traffic there late at night, and I'm pretty sure this development would stop, would stop that stuff. But I would like to see it at least stay PD 3 or lower. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed and allow the applicant to come back and respond to some of those comments.
First, I would address, I believe Mr. Henry made note of the fact that KB Home is no longer part of this. I believe I, that was one of the first things I said a month ago, just to clarify on the record, that they were a minor property owner when this process started, but they are no longer a property owner. They have, their property has now been sold to the trust. We've put up the map that shows the existing densities that are approved based on the city records. This is our site, the RPD 3 to the west and the north, there is RPD 4 to the south, and then RPD 7 to the east of that. So I show this as a way of showing that there is a mix of densities in this area. I would also say that as, I think everyone is aware, that all of these properties at one time were RE and have, and have evolved over time. In fact, the RPD 3 subdivision to the west, I believe, was approved probably in 2001 or 2002 and was changed to RPD 3 at that time. The bottom line here is a situation of economics at, in 2008, our developer just is in a position where he cannot go any lower than where we are today. It's a matter of numbers at this point. We think we have done what we could, making the larger lots along Leon, reducing the density to below the 4 number, but it is still RPD 4 because it is in that range above 3.5. With that, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. One other thing that I would mention, the setbacks along Leon can certainly match the setbacks that are in the RPD 3, which is a 15-foot to the house and 20-foot to the garage door. We have proposed slightly different setbacks for the rest of the project, which are, which are 14 feet to the house and 18 feet to the garage door, so there's a difference of one or two feet on the interior of the project.
Thank you very much. Now I'd like to turn the matter over to the planning commissioners for discussion and Well, see.
Glad, I mean, I guess I do have a question here.
Please.
What the heck? The RPD 3 and the RPD 4, staff can tell me that, you know, where we're talking total units per acre, so I mean, we can put this in perspective.
I can do that for you if you'd like. Whatever you want.
PD 3 would be up to 3.49.
Okay, and the applicant is asking for what?
Their revised request is 3.9?
3.91.
I understand the neighbors' real concerns about the perceptions of a rural area, but everything I look at around here is, these are very, not very dense, but they are dense housing developments. This is not what I would see as rural, like if we were talking R and P and some of those areas. We have infrastructure in place, and I really believe that having this developed out will ultimately add value to your neighborhood, contrary to what, you know, the current thinking is. Because as those newer homes are sold into the market as it turns around, they're gonna be selling at better comps than what currently is going. So I, I like the changes the applicant made. I think there's significantly greater enhancements than what we saw before, but I still am sensitive to the neighbors' concerns about density and, but I, I'm not so sure if there's a 100% solution here.
Chairman?
Thank you. Mr. Evans?
Yes, I am less concerned about the density because I think the statement was made that the, the homes, I think they start at 2,000, 2,400 or somewhere in that ballpark, and they go up, did you say to 5,000?
That's, that's what was submitted, yes, and we're willing to stipulate to a condition to that if that's required.
And, you know, we've said before at this body, I've heard it said many times, that the homes being proposed at 4,000 and 5,000 square feet are relatively modest in size. And I always say, well, where did we get as a community where we think a 3,000 or 4,000 or 5,000 square foot home is modest? I think it's pretty huge, but my issue is less with the density. I note that the general plan, I think, was originally desert rural, I think, in the area.
Correct.
And my suspicion is that if there were any little rural areas out there, that many of the people who came here tonight, and I respect that you've made substantial commitments and I imagine have beautiful homes, but I suspect that the argument was made at that point, you know, that you've changing the zoning or the density to, to allow the RPDs in areas that were probably once relatively vacant or little ranchettes, I'm guessing, but. So the density, I'm a little less concerned about. I do understand the issue of compatibility and neighbors wanting to, to ensure the, you know, their neighborhoods are protected, and I do, I do value that. My issue in part, and it probably comes a little late, but in the illustrations provided in our backup, it shows some, it shows three different models of homes. Mr. Genzer, you can see right here, I think you know what I'm talking about. And I'm always a little perplexed that in the, in this valley, that we tend to build these things with the same old red tile roofs and the same huge facades in the front that are really mostly all garage. Most urban planners and most folks would tell you that that's not a desirable concept for, for building communities, where you have the, the most prominent feature basically where you put cars. I can't argue about the architecture, it is what it is, but I keep wondering why, as a valley, we don't look beyond that and stop building the faux Tuscan little communities that all look alike. They're monochromatic, if you didn't know where your house was when you move in, you could probably have a hard time finding it. And that really has to do with the site plan and probably somewhat subjective in terms of what you like and dislike, but I look at other communities where they, they've done things differently and they have different architectural concepts that really lend itself more to building in the desert, to building with the land, to building, you know, taking a site and maximizing its natural aesthetic beauty rather than putting the same old stuff up. And I've never really got a clear answer other than that's what people buy. And my answer to that is, I think people buy what's built, there really aren't a lot of options. I think from a profitability standpoint, particularly in this market, if you built a different product, you probably have, I would think that you'd have huge sales and huge profits. So I don't know what, I'm really kind of just up on a soapbox here, but Mr. Genzer, I know you work with some of these home builders, and I'm wondering if there isn't some way that someone can look at some of the designs we build and try to build something different than what we all do. And I know you know that, I mean, you're a world-class planner, so I'm assuming you, you just take your cues from your clients, but I wonder, I sometimes think that we, as the planning commissioners, need to start giving direction to builders and to developers to develop something new. Do something different, do something exciting and indigenous to the area. And the other thing is that as people come forward, when we build these even small developments, we hear very little about sustainability. We don't hear about. We don't hear about, you know, we have the on-demand hot water. We've oriented our buildings so that we maximize the sun and we minimize the, you know, we maximize the shade to protect for heat and, you know, we don't hear a lot of that. And that concerns me because if all the dire projections of our growth are ever to really come true, we need to start building differently. And I'm not seeing any of that in any of the products that come forward. And I know these are sort of rhetorical, but maybe you can, maybe you can address some of them, Mr. Ginsor.
The only thought I think that I would put on the record is, in regard to your comment about everything looking alike, I think you have a much greater opportunity to make things look different if you have a master plan area like a Summerlin, as an example. Because once their plan is set, then it doesn't change as often as areas like this, where you may have, as we have, almost the last developable parcel in this particular area. I mean, there's only this one quadrant here that is, I'm sorry, we're not on the overhead, but that would be left once this goes in. And the neighbors have talked about compatibility and comparability. And I think in a case like this, if you were to try to put a subdivision in that, let's say, has a Scottsdale design, Adobe-type design, it's going to stand out like a sore thumb, and that's not what they want in their neighborhood. So, that is a major issue.
Commissioner.
Commissioner.
I just remember that when we sent Mr. Ginsor and his client back a few weeks ago, he, in my opinion, came back with exactly what this commis, what we asked you to do. And although I certainly feel for the neighbors around it, I think that you've done a great job in making it better, making the houses, you know, on bigger land, pieces of property. And I think, in my opinion, you did simply what we asked you to do. So, thank you, Mr. Ginsor. It looks like a nice project.
Well, I'll chime in here. And Mr. Ginsor and I have talked several times on this, and I think, I think they have come back with the site plan, as I asked them to come back with, was a little more creative. But I want to mention that I got an email from Regina Fokowicz, and she had lined out seven items that she wanted to see. And I think Mr. Ginsor has met all of those items except one, and that's the density. And to those folks, I think the density was a huge issue. And barring that, the fact that somebody mentioned the shooting park, which was a moot point 10 years ago, I think we're going to have to support those homeowners in that area on the density issue. And I know it's just, it's minor. And it's, we're talking, you know, tenths of a percentage point, but in these folks' mind, to me, there was enough of those folks to show up, that that matters to me. So, I'm probably going to be the lone no vote, it sounds like, on this deal. But at least I know that they have somebody standing up for me out there. So, that's all I wanted to say.
If, I could ask staff, what would be the maximum number of units per acre that could be built at RPD4?
4.49.
4.49.
Uh huh.
As kind of a position, could we add a condition to say that the density would not exceed 3.91 units per acre, rather than just going with four and then coming back with a change and trying to go in for 4.49?
If I may, on the site plan that is part of this, we will be setting the maximum at 118, which is what they're proposing.
Total number of units, no matter how they're mixed around.
And the site plan is required to go with the zoning.
Okay. Thank you. Then I think we're ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion for you. Item 23, GPA 25905, move for approval, subject to conditions.
Cast your votes, please. Motion carries. Item number 24.
Item number 24, ZON 25906, move for approval, subject to all conditions.
Motion's been made. Please cast your vote. Post. Item number 25.
Item 25, VAC 25907, move for approval, subject to the conditions.
Motion's been made. Please cast your vote. Post. And item number 26.
26 is SDR 25908, move for approval, subject to conditions.
If I may, if I may, on this one, condition number three, we would simply ask to have added to condition number three, the language for a maximum 118 units.
Thank you.
So amended.
Motion's been made. Please cast your vote. Post. Motion carries.
All matters go forward to council on April 2nd.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now take a short break. Thank you.
We'll call the meeting back to order. Item 28, VAR 26127, to allow a 76 parking spaces, where 106 parking spaces are required for a proposed light manufacturing facility. I just wanted to mention that the applicant is BBH LLC. Staff? Let me go ahead and open related item 29, SDR 25482, for a proposed 49,494 square-foot light manufacturing facility with a waiver to allow no landscape buffers along the north and south property lines where eight feet is required.
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, as you're aware, item number 27 was withdrawn. That was for a setback variance. The applicant has revised their site plan. They submitted a copy to staff earlier today. We have reviewed it and find it to be in conformance with setback requirements. However, they still require a variance from parking requirements. And while we commend the applicant for pursuing lead certification with this project for their use of solar panels and shading the parking area, because of the parking variance, we cannot support this application. Recommend denial.
Thank you. Applicant?
Good evening. Karen Richardson, 815 Pilot Road Suite E, Las Vegas. We're the architects for Big Town Mechanical. They will be the occupants of this new building on Western. It backs up to Highland Avenue, and it's about a half a block south of Oki, to familiarize you with the neighborhood. The parking variance, we think, is justified for a couple of reasons. First, the operation of Big Town Mechanical is for heating and cooling subcontracting. So, for the most part, their employees are never on-site. At least, the company as a whole at one time is never on-site. They currently have about 25 to 30 people in their 5,000-square-foot building at 2,000 Western, which, if we can go to the overhead, I'll show you their existing building. The plan for the company is to grow to about 45 employees, and that's the reason that the new building is about 49,000 square feet in three stories. On 2,000 Western, however, we will do some improvement to, or some striping in that existing yard area that they use right now for parking. One of the reasons for the parking variance is because Western is projected to be an 80-foot right-of-way. So, in front of 2,000 Western, there are about 11 parking spaces. But because we have to dedicate this additional 10 feet for the future widening, Public Works is not allowing us to use those 11 parking spaces in our count. Now, granted, we're still going to be short. Even if we were to use those 11 spaces in the count, we're still short. But we believe the justification that the employees are never on-site, never will use the 76 parking spaces that we are providing is a good reason for, for the parking variance. Additionally, parking on Highland is allowed, and there is a neighbor to the south of this development that we could potentially enter into discussions to use their parking in the event that we, that they would have employees, more than 76 employees, on-site on a continuing basis. So, that's the justification for the parking variance. Would you like me to address the site development plan review?
Sure.
Okay.
Excuse me, before you go any further, I apologize. I need to abstain from this because we own the building across the street. Sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Again, on the overhead, I just want to point out where the revision to the site plan is for the 10-foot setback, right along here. And the reason we made the adjustment is to accommodate the neighbors to the north Fisher's Auto Body Shop. We just came to that agreement with them this past week, and that was the reason for the short notice of getting revisions to staff. The building has a pretty good setback from Western, even the future right-of-way. So, there is a portion of the building at the north corner that will be closest to Western, but we are creating a nice entryway with some additional landscaping that I think you wouldn't normally see in an industrial area. And then, of course, parking on, at grade. And then parking, I'm sorry, landscaping on Highland, that I believe, certainly staff could correct me if I'm wrong, is not required. And so, we think that's a fair trade for asking for the waiver of the landscaping on both the north and the south property lines. Can I answer? Any questions for you?
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is anybody in the audience for or against this item? Please come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board. My name is Teddy Russell. I'm a resident of Las Vegas. First of all, light manufacturing is music to my ears. In my opinion, the attorney on behalf of the applicant has made very logical and very sound arguments on behalf of this project. I think the architecture is superb. I recommend approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Farlow?
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. It's manufacturing, I wish, I'd like to have the applicant tell us exactly what it is that they manufacture, and if this is a heating and cooling, if the manufacturer is in ductwork and stuff like that, I mean, do they take the service trucks home with them and that? Explain that a little bit, please.
Thank you. Seeing no more for the public hearing, I'll close it. Ms. Richardson, could you please answer the question? Thank you.
Thank you. They don't manufacture anything related, anything that they have to, I'm not saying this very well. A heating and cooling subcontractor does have material on-site for ducting, but they don't manufacture, they don't make the material on-site.
They don't fabricate.
Thank you. Thank you. That's what I was looking for. So, the purpose of the warehouse is so that they can bend that duct and then take it out on the site for installation. Of the, excuse me, of the employees that they have with trucks, they do, for the most part, take them home every night. And so, that same employee then is dispatched from their home to a construction site, for the most part.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the board?
Just a couple of questions. I agree with Mr. Russell on this, that the architecture is superb. Who's the real talent in your firm?
It's not me. Our principal architect, Stephen Richardson. Is that, was that your question?
Is he here?
Yes, he is.
Oh, okay, good.
Do you have questions for him, Commissioner?
I don't know if I do or not. Hi, Steve. I'm just giving you a hard time. Unless there's any other questions, I'm.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi. I want to ask a question.
Commissioner Steinman?
Can we put a condition in here that the four miles of razor wire will be removed from this property? I mean, it's just, it's just incredible.
On the existing?
I've never seen so much.
You didn't get caught in it today, did you?
No, I, last weekend I did, though. But I think, I know we have a law against it, but it is so prevalent here that I think we need to get it removed. It's one of the worst over there in that area. Yeah, there's others that have it, and I see that, too. Can we, should we add a condition, or will it be done as a part of the construction follow-up?
It will be part of the construction.
Okay, all right. That's fine, just so I mention on the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chairman Trowbridge and Mr. Evans?
I heard, you heard someone mention you were using photovoltaic technology on this project?
Yes, sir. That is the plan. The parking area on the third floor of the structure, the shade structure, hopefully, will be the photovoltaic panels.
Hopefully. I'd like to hear a stronger word than hopefully.
Hopefully. Well, that is, our principal architect could certainly answer that question.
How about will be?
Will be. Okay.
I like, I let the record reflect, you said will be.
Thank you.
I've got you painted in a corner now. Well, I was going to object because of the deficiency in parking, but because you pointed out that so many of the employees do, in fact, take the service vehicles home, and therefore, we won't have the problem of parking personal vehicles while they drive the company trucks out, that mitigates that. So, Steve, you're?
Yes, thank you. Just as a matter of full disclosure, I met with Ms. Richardson in my office a few weeks ago, when this was originally scheduled to be heard at another meeting. And she essentially represented the same things that she has this evening. I did get an opportunity to look at the elevations and some of the plans in more detail, so I did want to disclose that. I do think that you've made your legal basis for the parking variance, and I certainly would support that. At the time, when I met with Ms. Richardson, my concerns were that the present business, I don't think the parking would be an issue, but that if the company were to be sold and a new owner come in, we would end up with a previously approved, non-conforming parking issue. So, I was somewhat sensitive to that, but it sounds like the applicant is in for the long haul. And so, I would be inclined to support that. With regard to the site development review, I had asked, Ms. Richardson, maybe you can help me with this, when, when the vacation or the, part of the property is, at some point, they're going to widen the street, right?
Yes.
And a portion of your property will be taken.
Yes.
My hope is that you could work within the buffer that wouldn't be taken to create some aspects of landscaping. And my hope is that we can create a streetscape through the use of as many trees as possible, so that as that area matures, we're not just looking at a building in concrete, but rather a little bit of green. And finally, and maybe you can address that. And finally, part of my approving this or pushing the button for approval is somewhat based on your representations, that you'll be looking at alternative energy sources and with the solar, the parking structures. So, I want you to be real clear about that, that I applaud you, but it's one of the reasons why I'm supporting the site plan. So, maybe you can address the issue of the landscaping, because I would hate to have you put landscaping out on the street only to have to remove it in a few years, and that just seems silly all the way around. But you know what the parameters of the, of the taking will be, so maybe we can identify some areas within the area within the area, you know, a setback where some landscaping could occur.
Certainly. Thank you, Commissioner. Back on the overhead, one more time.
You're there?
You're there? Where my finger is right now represents the area about 10 feet that will be dedicated for the future right-of-way of Western Avenue. So we will be landscaping it in the current condition or the future condition, and then when Western is widened and this area is paved, we have additional landscaping behind that, if you will. And that would be the mature landscaping then that you would be looking for in that future condition when Western is widened.
I'm just wondering why not just go, you know, do all the landscaping within the area that will not be when Western is widened? You're talking about doing landscaping in both the area that will eventually be a road as well as within the perimeter of the proposed.
Yes. So there's 20, there's about 20 feet that will be landscaped with the development of this building through the construction phase, and then 10 feet of that will be used in the future when the city widens Western.
I'm curious, what does our staff think about that? Mr. Flynn, are you, or Mr. Fagan?
One of the things that we are not aware of is the exact timeframe for the widening of Western Avenue, so I can't really comment on that. I think the applicant has done an excellent job of trying to accommodate that future widening by still providing some type of a landscape buffer strip between their parking area and what will eventually be the right-of-way line. So I think they have addressed that to a certain degree. Again, they are showing that they're going to be planting street trees in an area that will be lost to the widening, and we prefer to have those in there any case, anytime that we can get those. But again, it is unfortunate that they would have to lose those at some later point in time.
I'm curious, does part of the plan require the street improvements in terms of putting in sidewalks and that sort of thing?
Gina Venglas with Public Works. If I may answer the questions, Mr. Chairman, through you. It is a standard condition that when we are going to be asking for dedication for future right-of-way, what we're expecting is the dedication at this time, but not the construction. With that being said, we wouldn't want to leave that area as-is or dirt or whatnot. So on condition number 20 of the site plan, which is item 29, states that they must landscape and maintain all unimproved right-of-way, if any adjacent to this site. So it would fall under that category, where we would expect some landscaping within that area for the interim condition. Secondly, because we will be doing the project in the future, we certainly don't want them going out, spending all the money on something that we'll be tearing out. So condition number 17 is going to allow that they sign a covenant agreement for that future sidewalk. They will be having to remove, I think, an existing driveway, putting in a new driveway that meets pan-driveway standards. So we have accommodated that.
So if and when Western is widened, the city is protected in the sense that the applicant has agreed to all the improvements and all the things that would make it seamless and.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
No more comments or questions. We'll entertain a motion on item 28.
If no one's ready to make a motion, I'm happy to do so. On item 28, variance 26127, I believe that's the parking, the parking variance, I think the applicant has made a good case for a yes vote on the variance, and my motion would be for approval of that item with all the conditions as listed.
Motion on the floor for approval. Please cast your vote. Item 29.
Mr. Chairman, if I might interject before a motion is made.
You may.
I failed to mention that condition number four, we need to modify the last sentence of that to just read handicap parking spaces shall be provided in accordance with code requirements. So we would like to make that change to condition number four.
And also, if I may, on condition number three, we need to change the date of the site plan to January 14th, '08.
Mr. Evans, are you okay with those amendments to your motion?
My motion would reflect the comments made by the staff. I believe it was relative to conditions number three and conditions number four. And again, the motion would be for approval of the site development plan, subject to all the conditions with the amended representations of the staff.
So moved. Please cast your vote.
I apologize. The actual date would have to be February 28th, '08.
Whatever.
Exactly.
Commissioner Evans, those aren't softballs either. Cast your vote for approval with amended changes as read in by staff. That has been approved with Commissioner Quinn abstaining. Item 29.
No, I think it was items 28 and 29.
Yeah, we did it. And all, both of those items go forward to counsel on April 2nd.
Item 33, ARC 25687, applicant Vision Sign Incorporated, owner VHC 215 LLC, requests for an appeal of a denial of a major modification to an approved master sign plan, CHR 0003-02, and waivers to allow two pylon signs where only one pylon sign per frontage is permitted, and to allow the pylon sign to be within 100 feet of a single-family residence where a minimum of 330 feet is required at 8420 Farm Road. Sam?
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, this application for a modified sign plan was reviewed by the Centennial Hills Architectural Review Committee, as they do have authority for signage approval in the town center area. The additional pylon sign was recommended for denial by the committee. Staff supports that denial as the proposed sign exceeds what is allowed by code and also as it would be within 100 feet of a residential property. So consequently, again, we do recommend denial of this request.
Thank you very much. Applicant?
Matthew Warner with Developer Vertical Holdings.
Long time no see, man.
Yes, long time since I've.
Welcome back.
Thank you. I'm going to give you a brief history and location of the project. The project is located at Durango and Farm off the 95. It is originally approved several years ago and is constructed. There's an Albertson's, several pads, gas station, existing retail, and a McDonald's located there. This is the originally approved site plan and signage plan that was talked about at the CHARC meeting. And originally was approved, this project had Albertson's on the site and also had about 110,000 square feet, big box, that was originally proposed. Also had several signs proposed, a 24-foot sign, a 24-foot sign, and four 8-foot monument signs. The 8-foot monument signs have never been constructed, so the only existing signs out there are the 24-foot signs and signs at the gas station. The site plan for the project as currently approved and planned for construction is a three-story self-storage which is now open, about 60,000 square feet of retail and several pads. Of note is this line, that is actually the property line for our project. That's the property we own. Everything else is owned by Albertson's or a different developer. What we had proposed originally was for an additional 24-foot sign located here on Durango. We understand that probably wasn't the best thing to propose a 24-foot sign that close to the property, the residential properties. What we'd like, excuse me, what we'd like to propose instead is moving the 24-foot sign that we'd like, the additional 24-foot sign, from this location adjacent to the residence to a location that's about 240 feet from the nearest property. It is still less than the code of 330 feet, but we feel, based upon the fact that this is truly a separate project from the original project, and we do not have any rights to any other signage on the property. That's why we want the 24-foot sign specific for our project. The other signs that are approved, like I said, are not on this property or part of this project. We don't have rights to build them. We can't construct them. A better indication of where the sign would be is this aerial. What we're proposing is a 24-foot sign located here. This is the existing residence that we're worried about buffering. There is an existing town center trail along here with mature landscaping that we feel buffers any visual impacts, as well as there will be a building right here ultimately built that will further buffer the 24-foot sign for any visual impacts.
Can you point to where that sign's going to go again on that?
Right here. This is the furthest location on our property from the residence.
Is that by that drive, by that McDonald's?
Yeah, this is McDonald's Drive. The property line runs right there along the McDonald's Drive, cuts out the McDonald's pad, and this is our property. So our location would be the furthest that we can put it on our project from the residence.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience for or against this item, please come forward at this time. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Questions or comments, starting with Commissioner Dunham. Commissioner Steinman?
Well, Commissioner Dunham and I, and I think you were there also, Mr. Chairman, that day when we reviewed this, is that correct, at CHARC?
That would be correct.
Yeah. When we reviewed this at CHARC, that day it was pretty set in stone that there was not going to be any movement of the sign anywhere, it was going to stay close to those properties. I think that's, I don't think you were there that day, but the sign guy was, if I recall.
Yeah, and we apologize, there was miscommunication. I was out of town that day, and the item was handled, and we'll admit, it wasn't probably handled properly, but the sign guy, Daryl Shock, didn't have the authority to agree to any movements.
Okay.
And once we found that, that's why we filed the appeal, because we definitely think we can work with what you guys are looking at and find.
And I do think that when properties of this size get parceled out, this is what we end up with. Your issue now. There's no place to put us on, basically. So because you're changing it to a different location, I must admit I have a little bit of a different attitude about it than I did the day it appeared before CHARC. So I would, I would support you at this time, because I do believe, even though parcelling occurs, you do have a right to a sign for whatever you're trying to push on your site. So that's my opinion right at this point.
Mr. Truesdale, comments? Okay. Commissioner, Vice Chairman Trowbridge.
Are you putting up two pylon signs or one?
No, we're only constructing one sign. There's an existing pylon sign already constructed on the site, located here, it's on the McDonald's property, and it's tied to the Albertson's. We'd be adding a new pylon sign.
The remaining authorized sign.
The authorized sign was an 8-foot monument sign. We're requesting to change that to located here and have it be a 24-foot sign. Once again, this is a 24-foot sign that was built and is up with the project. This was an 8-foot monument sign that was approved as part of the original sign plan. We're proposing to build a 24-foot sign located here, which is over 240 feet from the residence and over 200 feet from the existing sign.
Thank you.
And that would have been acceptable had the ownership of this property entirely stayed with one. It would have worked properly. But parcelling it the way you have leaves you out in the cold.
Well, you know, this originally was going to be with a big box. I think it was a Kmart originally approved. We were actually very happy, very excited to bring this project, going to do 60,000 square feet of office services and retail, bring more services to the community. We have a storage that's up and constructed and is doing very well. So in a way, it's negative; in another way, we think it's positive, and we believe it'll be an asset to the community.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Warner, do we have a copy of that plan? The staff indicated we do.
I've got one that I'm going to submit tonight.
Okay, that's great.
At this point, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion on jet item number 33, ARC 25687. A move for approval, subject conditions. And you want to add something to that, Margot?
The approval would be pursuant to the plan submitted on February 28th, '08.
Thank you. As amended.
Do you want to clarify that the sign will be that minimum distance away from the residential?
At 250, 240 feet from the residential.
240 feet.
You okay with that, applicant?
Yes, we are. Thank you.
Motion on the floor for approval. Please cast your votes. And that motion has passed.
And that is final action and was appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you very much. It's good seeing you. Good seeing you guys, too.
I thought you went back to that NFL Combine for your first life again.
No, no, I was too far removed from that. Thank you.
Item 34, SDR 256968, applicant owner Land Capital Partners LLC for a proposed 276-square-foot addition to an existing office building and waivers of perimeter landscape buffers to allow a 0-foot landscape buffer along the south property line where 15 feet is required to allow a 0-foot landscape buffer along the north and west property lines where 8 feet is required, and to allow a 0-foot landscape buffer along the east property line where 6 feet 5 inches is required at 4704 West Charleston Boulevard. Staff?
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, although the proposed addition is fairly minimal, due to the inadequate landscape buffers and lack of safe parking lot access, staff is recommending denial of this request.
Thank you. Staff? Or applicant, I'm sorry.
Alan Hughes, 4045 South Buffalo, owner, A&amp;T Enterprises, Inc., general contractor, agent for Land Capital Partners. I believe that we were to come back with a plan to allow for landscaping in front, and as I recall, the commission allowed for no landscaping in the back as long as we had the parking. And so we came back and worked with staff to get landscaping in front, and I think that was Commissioner Quinn's obstruction to what we originally sought. So I think we've complied, along with some minor conditions that staff has asked, that we don't have a problem with.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience for or against this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, I'll entertain questions or comments from the board. I'll work from my right to my left. Commissioner Quinn?
I visited your property this week, and Gina spoke with me prior to the meeting today to let me know that that, could you put that, is that picture up of the, that one palm tree that you're putting is going to, Gina told me, cause difficulty for.
Thank you.
Please tell me, Gina, what you said again.
I will. Right now, they've shown the palm tree as remaining in the existing location on their site plan. Unfortunately, it's within the drive aisle, which is problematic for traffic. I've crafted a condition that I have handed out to each of you to add to the site plan that will state that the existing palm tree located within the proposed driveway shall be removed or relocated. Alternatively, the driveway shall be designed to accommodate the location of the existing tree to the satisfaction of the city traffic engineer, and that can allow the possibility of moving the driveway further west to have the clearance they need between the palm tree and the drive aisle.
Thank you. Mr. Hughes, I think first I want to know if this is passed today, or if it's not, you being the owner. How quickly can you clean this up? Because as I went around it and behind it, you've got serious vandalism going on, you've got lots of broken beer bottles, and there's windows broken, which tells me people are inside that building, using it for possible, maybe sleeping overnight to get out of the streets, possible juveniles in there drinking. But I saw some real issues that, by looking at the picture that I'm looking at now, it just really makes my ward look really just despicable. So my first question is, how quickly can you clean this up so that we can get started on your project to make it look good?
I'm looking to start right away. And just for reference, I'm the contractor, I'm not the owner. I'm just the agent for the owner.
I'm surprised.
We've cleaned it up three different times, and the city has come back and also sprayed it for the graffiti that.
I was there yesterday, and it looks as bad as it looks.
That's within two weeks.
It's sad. It just really made me really sad. And Mimi was there for a long time. I used her alteration service many times, and.
Since Mimi's left, it's.
Yeah, it just makes me so sad. The neighbor to the east of you has a little, nice little hedge going on. It's not much, but it's better than nothing. And so it would be facing the south, that, you know, the front of Charleston, that I, we have that one little hedge there, you know, has to stay. But I really, if you take a look at your neighbor, it's not really maintained real nicely. I want you to kind of set a standard to start from this corner and clean this up, because this is what I saw yesterday, and I, you know, you're going to, your neighbor's going to be liable, somebody, something bad could happen here, and you're not, nobody's manning this property is what I'm trying to say. So you've come back with a better plan. Gina's helped me realize that we can't. back with a better plan. Gina's helped me realize that we can't, you know, we can't make it much more than the front little buffer hedge is nice and stuff. You're...the only way the parking can increase is if you mow down the building and move it completely back and start from scratch, which...
As a contractor, I would love that.
And as a builder's wife, I would love for you to do that. Believe me. You know, I'm married to a builder, and I would love to see that. But I understand that you can't. So, you know, I think that you've done more than you did the last time, and I'm subject to accept your presentation. But I'm really hoping that you set a standard, your owner sets a standard. And I think it's important, when you're doing something like this, that he should be here, so that we can kinda look him in the eye and tell him and not you. So...
Well, they weren't here. They just got obligations.
But I'd like to meet them, or it's kinda too late for me now. Maybe they can meet with my councilwoman when it gets to the next level, because your word is good, but his word, to me, would be better.
Okay. Mr. Quinn, I'm sure he'll diligently tell them you should think it should be mowed down and built again.
I...
Commissioner Abbott?
Yes, thank you. I just think this is a prescription for failure right here. I'd like to see, you know, you have a viable use, but I was going through the backup earlier today, and I'm fairly familiar with the area. Essentially, you want to increase the square footage of a 1960s building to make it more viable. And in the backup plan, I think you...I don't know whether...I don't know who the acting agent is. Someone signed it, but they didn't indicate their name.
I don't know what you're looking at.
But it says essentially that it's the justification letter from the president and acting agent of the property. And essentially, they say that they need to increase the square footage, and that they need the waiver for the required landscaping in order to make it...it would be cost prohibitive to do the things that the code requires, I think is essentially what they're saying. But I know that in the approvals, we're in 1977 to convert what was then a single-family house to, I think it was office, office or...
Real estate office.
A real estate office. And in that requirement, in the...when they allowed the zoning, from what the backup says, there was a requirement to put in landscaping. The then applicant or the then owner, I'm assuming it wasn't the people that own it now. Do you know?
I do know. In the beginning, they had a, I don't know what you would call it...
Who owns it? Do the people who own it now?
Six months, less than six.
They've only owned it six months. In 1977, there were agreements that the...apparently, in order to change the zoning, the then owner had to put in the landscaping. And from what the backup says, they did do that. But then they illegally, I might add, added concrete. They took it out and poured concrete.
It's been three owners since that time. We found irrigation on the east, where my partner is here, and in front. And those were met at the time to get it to go to the C1 status, so that it was in. And then, because of this traffic situation with diesel and delivery, it got mowed over. So, then they just capped it over on both sides.
Well, I guess my point is that when the approval was made in 1977, there were certain agreements, conditions for approval for a zone change.
And those were in the front.
And those were in the front. And at some point, the landscaping that was required, the planners or whatever, were removed, and concrete was poured. So, essentially, what you got is an ugly building front with no landscaping. And that concerns me, because I gotta tell you, it happens over and over and over again. And in my ward, and in Ward Five, and to a lesser extent, I think, in Ward One, I'm so angry about some of these conversions. And this is not yours, but I'll just throw it out there, because I went down eastern yesterday. I got gorillas. Gorillas that are like four feet, four stories tall in front of what was a single-family residence. I know the conditions for approval didn't allow a gorilla. Now, if I lived behind there, I would look out my window, and I would see a gorilla. That's a code violation. And it makes me crazy, because the people next door put up something else, a toad or something. And, you know, it's something that tomorrow I'll be on the phone with code enforcement. My point is this. We allow these conversions from single-family residential to professional, to office, to commercial. And there are conditions of approval. And usually, they require some aspect of landscaping, so that we have a treescape, and so that the one-time trees, it doesn't look blighted. And what happens is the applicants get the approval, they get the zone change, and then they either through, because the properties are sold, or the management changes, or they think no one's looking, they let the landscaping die, and then they pour concrete. The average nighttime temperature of the city of Las Vegas is 10 degrees higher than it was 10 years ago. The reason for that is the concrete and the lack of trees. The staff report says there's a public safety issue, and maybe, Gina, you can address this. I'd like to see a way that you can achieve your business goals, but I think we're here to protect the city. And there's no reason why we can't have an attractive streetscape. And the way this looks, I'm hopeful that there's a little bit of improvement in your application. But, you know, whoever owns this, I mean, they need to do their due diligence when they're buying the property, and realize that some of the conditions that allowed the zoning to change originally have not been met. They've been removed.
So, can I answer that, Commissioner? Because I think what we are looking to do brings the property up. The property to the east of this building is a property that we're looking to match. And as was stated, they have scampily done the landscaping, and we're looking to bring it up. So, trying to make this building an administrative building for the property to the east, I think, will do that by adding an easement that matches their easement, by adding landscape that outdoes their landscape, by painting and all those such things to bring the property up after being four months without anything happening. As you've heard earlier with the graffiti and such, I think we're looking to bring the property up and get an adequate rent out of what we're doing.
So, do they own the property next door as well?
No, but we are looking to try to add to that site. In other words, keep that direction going. And the gas station, you know, we're hoping to, once we've done that, to get some kind of fulfillment with the wall.
I just feel so strongly that, particularly in this area, that we have an affirmative responsibility to make sure that when things are built and zoning is changed, and when site development plans are reviewed, that we end up with something better, that we end up with a city that's more attractive. And they're saying that, I mean, I've been up there. It's just a bunch of concrete. How can we do this where, I mean, I know that you may not be able to meet all the standards, but certainly, there's gotta be something to make this more attractive, and some assurance of compliance that in a year, it's not gonna be just dead and mowed over. Gina, maybe you can address that. Are you, Mr. Chairman?
Don't mention gorillas.
I won't. Certainly, what our issue is, is the existing palm tree that's in the drive aisle. They are proposing landscape along the eastern boundary, and then also sort of in the center, budding Charleston. The condition we would request be added actually allows that he can come in and try to get...relocate the driveway further east, so that there's about a six-foot clearance between that palm tree and the start of the driveway. So, it may be able to stay there if he can get it to work out. And certainly, the condition's written to allow just that.
Mr. Chairman?
May I just ask one quick question, and then I'll stop?
Ms. Quinn, and then...
I just wanna ask...you're saying that this is an administrative building, an administrative office? That says to me that you're gonna put some...your owner's gonna put something in there that he's proud of. What is he gonna administer from that building? What type of business is he gonna be operating?
We're looking...he's actually looking to relocate from California to here and let that be a central spot that we go, hopefully.
But what does he do? What is he gonna run out of there? Does he have clients in and out of there, something he wants to be proud of? I mean...
Yeah, development.
Development business.
So, he's gonna be a developer, moving in here into that building, bringing clients onto that site?
And hopefully using A&amp;T as their general contractor.
All right. Or I have another one for you.
Commissioner, you do gorillas?
I don't do gorillas well.
Mr. Truesdale?
Play basketball.
We've had a lot of conversation about we want to improve what we do. Well, I think we can do that by being specific. It's amazing to me that we would...we're worried about saving a dead palm tree with a drive. The plans that are submitted say that not the standard conditions about removing substandard curb and gutter, the plan shows just concrete over a driveway there and leave it. There's no landscaping to this deal.
There is.
I mean, there's not an appreciable amount of landscaping. I mean, you've said what you've said, but the reality is, this is going to be a building that's shoved up on the street. It's a poor housing conversion in the first place with the...with what's there. You wanna add to it, which makes no sense parking-wise. And if you wanted to impress the city, you would have taken...you would have cleaned it up. You would have gone out and taken pictures that show that you have some pride of ownership in the property, and brought that back to this commission in asking for support. I mean, all in all, I think if we approve this in its present form, we will have nothing more than a bigger pig on this corner a year from now. And no, this isn't against you, the owners, or anything else. But this is just downright lousy, and we're not...there's nothing here to make it better. I mean, a coat of paint on this thing? Come on. It's miserable. And it's a primary corner. So, I'm not gonna support this.
Mr. Chairman, I know I spoke my piece, but let me just make one suggestion. There are little things that I think, and you may not be a landscaper, but you can put cat's claw, which is a form of vine, which is drought tolerant. It requires very, very little dirt. You could have a four-inch planter along that concrete wall, and within a year, the cat's claw would completely cover that wall. It doesn't rip the brick away. You can do the same thing to the facade of the front of the house. Landscaping doesn't have to be a big, huge planter. It doesn't have to be a bunch of, you know, trees that block the, you know, the ingress and egress. Half a mile from where you are, if not less, is plant world. Go up and talk to them, for goodness sakes. I mean, they've got great ideas.
May I address the commission?
Yes, sir.
I don't understand how you cannot say that we're not looking to do something. Obviously, in the state, it needs addressing. So, we're here before you with a plan to address that, and you're telling us that slapping paint and putting easement and spending $75,000 on it wouldn't work. And I think...I don't see the point. I think we're trying to make it work. I think we have a good goal to come back and show you landscaping and all those things to try and bring it up.
Thank you. More comments or questions from the board at this time?
Yes, let me...I can read the votes right now. If...I remember the last time you came up, we talked, and it was critical in my mind, more than landscaping in the west or east or northern boundaries have, because that's...
Behind.
Don't expend the money and effort and time on that. But the front was...needed to be addressed. And you come back with three-quarter inch crushed rocks, ground cover with three five-gallon plants. That doesn't constitute a landscape scheme. I also mentioned that I was aware of where that...your parcel is. If you go where the Red Wing store is...
East.
East. Then you go one more lot. There's the sister to this building. And it has a converted garage office space in the rear, just like you're proposing here. And it has, on the front of that converted house, it's an identical house. They put some little gingerbread stuff on. And on the roof, they put a little gingerbread on it. I know because these hands did it.
Light blue?
I don't know what color they've got it painted now. The last user was a phone company of some flavor, but it used to be an interior design firm. And it's done fairly nice. But I would invite you, because I don't hear the votes up here to pass this as presented. I would invite you to gather and take a look at that, and maybe you could duplicate that and spend a little more time doing something with the front. You've got area there that you could put a couple of foot and put some plant material in the front of the building, not out by the street. I think that's gonna go no place quick, you know? And the palm tree is dead, you know? And have it drawn there with the beautiful fronds that haven't been there in 10 years, you know? It's...we know the area. So, I think you're gonna have to try again. And I understand that you're just the contractor here trying to represent your owner's best interest, but I don't think it's gonna make it. So, anybody else have any comments? Otherwise, I'll make a motion.
Ready for a motion?
Okay. Motion is in Garage Item Number 34, Site Development Review 25968, to support staff's recommendation for denial.
Motion's on the floor for denial. Your vote will be for denial. Cast it. And that motion for denial has passed.
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days to the Office of the City Clerk.
Thank you. Item 35, SDR 26214, applicant owner Town Terrance Apartments LLC for the conversion of a 50-unit apartment complex to a condominium development at 322 South Seventh Street. Staff?
Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission, this is a conversion of a four-story apartment building constructed in 1985. However, the development is parking impaired and does not conform with minimum landscapes standards, and so consequently, staff is recommending denial of the request.
Thank you. Advocate?
Good evening. Liz Sorokac, 3800 Howard Hughes Parkway here on behalf of the applicant. Let me just orient you to this site. It's located on the northwest corner of Seventh and Chef Andre Rocher Place, I believe. This is a conversion of a 50-unit apartment building to condos. The current owner has begun improving the property by adding some stone accents to it and paint and stucco repairs. And the interior improvements for the condo conversion will be forthcoming. As far as the conversion itself, we understand that some of the things with the current building are not up to code, and we will be doing whatever we're required to do as far as building code to bring this building up to code, including whatever's required under the state statutes for a condo conversion. And I also saw there are several conditions in the if-approved conditions for the condo conversion. Additionally, we are going to be doing additional landscaping on the site to beautify it. The...there is a potential parking issue with this site, and that's really what I wanted to address here tonight. If I can direct you to the overhead, there are a couple reasons why, even though we're only providing 50 parking spaces and 69 are required, there's a couple of reasons why that shouldn't be an issue. The first, if you look at the overhead, there is this blue dotted line that goes right in front of our site, and you can see our site marked here on the plan. That's for a multi-use transportation trail. And as you are all aware, this is to promote pedestrian movement throughout the downtown area. And this will be a nice trail for people to use and to walk, and encourages walking. Secondly, this is located just outside the downtown Centennial area, which, if you look at the overhead again, is this light blue portion. We're just a half block from the downtown Centennial area, or, excuse me, downtown Centennial plan area. And as you know, that doesn't have any parking requirements. And we're also trying...excuse me. We're again trying to promote parking, or not parking, excuse me. We're again trying to promote pedestrian walking throughout the downtown. And so, being near the downtown, people are more likely to walk. There's also...I have one other overhead I wanna show you. There is adequate public parking in the immediate vicinity of the site. There is the City of Las Vegas Public Parking Garage within 620 feet of our site. And there's also metered parking, sufficient meter parking in the area. And I also wanted to point out that we will still be providing one parking space per unit in the building. So, with that, I respectfully request your approval, and I'm here for questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is anybody here for or against the item? Please come forward at this time. Please come forward at this time.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board. My name is Teddy Russell. I'm a resident of Las Vegas. Intriguingly enough, in the Quran and both the Christian and Judeo-Judeo read, there is no such thing as coincidence. Actually, I was there six weeks ago. I have the manager's card in my wallet. I was looking to this for transitional housing for myself. I do believe all the points made by the attorney on behalf of the applicant owner are valid. I'm in that area all the time. I have never seen any problem whatsoever with the parking. Also, I was in Las Vegas when we did, I was in Atlantic City when we had massive conversions of rental apartments to condominiums at the beginning of casino gambling. And so this is relatively routine to me. I do recommend approval with the understanding pretty well of what the mayor pro tem is looking for in this area also. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Would anybody like to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board? I'll go from right to left. Commissioner Quinn.
I'm always interested in how many units you will provide and sell to a disabled patron in a wheelchair. I'm looking at, I'm just curious to your amount.
And unfortunately, I don't have an answer for you, but I'd be happy to look into that and get back to you.
It's a really important question. I'd love to have the answer.
Okay.
Commissioner Abbott?
Yeah, briefly, maybe you can discuss your price points, and I'm kind of curious. I think it's an attractive building. It's in a great location. If you worked in the federal building or any of the courthouses downtown, it would be a great place to have an apartment, or even if you were a law firm, to keep a presence. But I don't have a problem really with it being condos. I am concerned, though, about, you say it's 100% occupied at the time by tenants. What happens to those renters? Do they have the right of first refusal? Realistically, can they purchase the place, or could they lease it, turn around and lease it from...
Sure. And let me just address that. We did send a letter to the tenants, just letting them know that we were going to be moving forward with this condo conversion, not immediately, but sometime in the future. And we did receive very positive response from the current residents. As far as the price point of whether the current residents would actually be able to afford living there, based on the price point that my client has given me, I believe that it is within the range of affordability for those current tenants. I don't, it wouldn't, it would be maybe, you know, depending on the square footage, and I didn't work out the percentages, but it might be a couple hundred dollars more per month, which I understand may be a lot, but that's still within the realm of affordability, and it's not anywhere near what some of the brand-new construction, the condo prices per square foot are in the downtown area.
I always wonder, as a community, it seems like when the market is favorable toward condos, all the apartments want to become condos, and then when it's the other way, they want to become apartments. So my only concern is that, as a community, we need rental properties, and I suppose condos could be rented, but I'm hopeful that, you know, we don't jump too quickly in some of these, but I think it's a great location. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Truesdale?
If there are no other comments or questions, I...
We will entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the application, subject to all staff's conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval, subject to all staff's condition. Please cast your vote. That motion has passed.
Thank you.
That goes forward to counsel on April 2nd.
Item 36, 37, 38, and 39 are all related items. ZON 26451, applicant owner, Moulin Rouge Properties LLC, owner, Moulin Rouge Properties LLC et al., from R3 Medium Density Residential and CM Commercial Industrial to C2 General Commercial adjacent to the north side of Bonanza Road approximately 100 feet west of H Street. Item 37, VAR 26453, to allow a lot coverage of 100%, where 50% is the maximum allowed, and to allow a zero-foot setback to the side, corner side, and rear property lines for a hotel and gaming establishment, non-restricted development. Item 38, SUP 26452, for a proposed 420-foot building in a A0 Airport Overlay District, where the height limitation is 175 feet, for a proposed hotel and gaming establishment, non-restricted development. Item 39, SDR 26449, for a proposed 41-story and 30-story hotel and gaming establishment, non-restricted development, including a 1,727-room hotel, a 72,596-square-foot non-restricted gaming facility, and a 381,734-square-foot commercial uses, with a waiver to allow perimeter landscape buffer widths of zero feet where eight feet is required at interior property lines. Staff?
Staff finds this request to be compatible with the pattern of development that is occurring along this portion of Bonanza Road and recommends approval.
Robert Holgate, 800 West Bonanza, and behalf of the applicant. At this moment, it's not only to say it's a historical moment to be up here, literally 53 years later, to come up with such a great team of not only consultants, but the Moulin Rouge Properties LLC and their developing partners, Republic Urban Properties LLC. The developing partners have had a tradition of bringing back landmark properties throughout the country of developing thousands of acres, literally over 17 million square feet, in commercial and residential space, and in lieu of that, in excess of $5 billion in development. Needless to say, with the patience of a lot of constituents here from Ward 5 and other residing wards, they've had the patience to sit here all night, but I've seen some people here that have been here and actually participated in the Moulin Rouge back in 1955, even though during his short stay. The economics of this particular project is very viable for this area, and it's been a long, long source of not happening, but we foresee, and the developers see, a great diamond in the rough, which is ready to happen. It's a time of socioeconomic path in which this development will create an influx of cash flow, creating more businesses in the areas off this catalyst, not only for the West Side community, which we call now the Uptown community, and this historical marker presentation. But what we do, it not only creates this West Side economics for new jobs and the growth and bettering the infrastructure of the community, but it also becomes more of a regional economic impact, not only for the city of Las Vegas and the downtown sector, but for the economics of Nevada entirely. We will bring in, not only nationally, but international, but worldwide. This name has been known for years. It has never gone away. It's just, we've gone through segregation. We were the first integrated casino and hotel in Las Vegas, and I call it a rejuvenation and ultimately a celebration. And here tonight, we have Advance, which is with our architect and principal of Advance Architects. We also have Republic Urban Development Principals, and as well as Moulin Rouge Properties LLC, that are here to answer any questions that the committee may have, since this is a public hearing.
Thank you very much. Just a quick comment before I open the public hearing. I think your speech is eloquent. I've been on the board for 15 years. I've seen three or four of these plans come, and I've heard all that speech in raw wire. I'm just like Commissioner Evans on the last one. I don't want to see softballs. I want to see something hit out the park. With that, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody here for or against this item? Please come forward at this time. Sing, Mr. Farlow?
Might I add to this? We're in concurrence with all the staff's conditions recommendations.
With one exception, though, but we'll listen to Mr. Farlow. We'll get to that.
Are they going to save the sign?
If anybody wants to speak on the item, please come down. We do have two mics. Those of you that have come and stayed all evening, if you'd like to come down and speak your piece, that's fine. I just want to applaud those residents of Ward 5 that came out tonight.
In support.
In support. By the way, can we, by standing up, show the folks in the audience that are in support of this? Just go ahead and stand up.
There you go.
Very good. Thank you.
Good stuff.
Now, if I could promise you another thing, we have this meeting every second and fourth Thursday. Can I have y'all all come down from Ward 5? I think this is history in its making as well. I should count the number of heads then.
If I might add a few things, we have...
Excuse me, sir. I have the public hearing open. I think this young lady would like to speak. Yes, ma'am. Please come forward.
I'm Sarah Knight-Preddy.
How are you?
I live at 2200 Matheson, and I've been here, I don't want to tell my age, I've been here 67 years. And I owned the Moulin Rouge at one time, and I think it's something that's way overdue, and I'm for it 100%, and I can see where it would be a gateway to the West Side, because we need something over there like this to start when they start building this. Other thing is going to happen over there. And I think it will bring more jobs over in that area, and I think it will bring more people to live in that area that could support that area better than it is now. And I've met these people that's doing this, and I have all the world of respect for them because I think they're really going to do it this time. I tried for 12 years, and it didn't work. But, you know, the time was wrong, but the time is right now, and I'm for it 100%.
You think they know what they're doing? They can get this done?
Oh, I think so. I really do. I've talked to several of the people who's working with them, and I think it's for real. I think it's really for real. They got all the things that they would take to make this happen.
Thank you. If you say it, Ms. Preddy, I do believe it takes a village to raise children, and her house is right around the corner from my parents. Matter of fact, she helped raise me to get me where I am. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Jean Bennett, and I live in Bonanza Village, which is very close to the Moulin Rouge. And I'm very excited about this whole plan. They've tried it before, but this time, I think it will definitely occur, and I think it will be very good for the surrounding town and village. And, well, I just want you to know I'm very much for it.
Thank you. You've probably run me out of home when I was young a little bit, too, probably. Thank you. Me, weekly, and Bartlow, I may say.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board. I happen to be hard times staying at the Moulin Rouge in 2003 when they had the fire in Atlantic City. I was so blessed in that I had many friends who knew Sammy Davis Jr. personally as just a pal. Sammy Davis Jr. is here right now. My heart is so full. I am so thankful that we've gone uptown with this project. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Good evening.
Watch those...
I can't say thank you so much. My name is Myrna Thomas.
Louis Vuitton shades, better pick them up.
Oh, really? My name is Myrna Thomas, and I'm a new resident here in Las Vegas, but I'm a graduate of Howard University. And when I was there on campus, yes, master's degree.
Pray for you. Excuse me.
When they did, once they did a go-record situation in the library on campus, they had a mention about the Moulin Rouge. So I'm a transplant from California. I've only been here four months. And that was one of the first places I wanted to go to when I really got to town as a resident. Usually, I'm just in and out of here for fun and back home, but as a resident, I had a concern. And when I went by and I saw the bulldozers, I freaked out because I read the sign on the street, and I was afraid that it was just going to be reduced to that. So I got on the phone, and I started calling people, and because most often times in black communities, they have all these promises and say that things are going to happen, and they really don't happen. And I would hate to see that be reduced to just a sign on the sidewalk. So I got involved with some people here very quickly, and I came down and I heard the plans the other day, and I think that this is one of the most sincere groups of people with regard to a project within a community like this that I've seen in a long time. And I've lived in Washington, DC for a couple of years while I was getting my master's degree. I'm from Oakland. I've worked in LA. I was a social worker for 20 years with Child Protective Services, so I've seen the worst of worst and blighted areas, including Silicon Valley East, San Jose, that a lot of people don't know about because they fly in there to do money deals and fly out. I'm very much in agreement with what these people have done. I think it's fabulous. I think that it will promote a lot of growth and harmony within that community, and I hope it passes tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anybody else want to have the last word? Young man? There you go.
He's too young, he's too young to gamble.
Give a round of applause for our future. Thank you. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Jalil Bryley, and I live on 1508 River Crest Court. My mother, Catherine Duncan, has, was the manager of the Moulin Rouge, and I hope that will be my first place to have my first job. Thank you.
All right. All right. And you should have caveated that in 20 years from your first job, you'll be the president, CEO, or even general manager. That's what we want to see from you. Thank you. No more comments. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. We'll turn it back over to the applicants for any comments.
Yeah, I've got a couple of, Advance with EVNA Architects, 900 South Pavilion Center Drive. We do concur with all staff recommendations, and Commissioner Gouens, or Chairman Gouens, I want to respond to you. I've been working with the previous owners, two previous owners, on a pro bono basis. So I've been on this thing for over 10 years, prior to even these owners, and my bills are being paid. So I don't know if that answers any of your questions, but...
I haven't seen anything out the ground, but...
No, I know that, I know that, but I've been here for 21 years, and I've seen a lot of, I've got a lot of paper architecture. And this one, I believe, will really, really happen. I'm counting on it. I'm actually an investor in the project. So I will tell you that this is going to happen. And I do have a response to that young man. He made mention of the sign. Are they going to keep the sign? Yes, actually, yesterday, we were passed by the State Historic Preservation Board. The sign will be kept, the wall that it sits upon will be kept, and the tower will be kept. The spot that was left after the fire. We do concur with all staff recommendations, with the exception of one friendly amendment that I humbly request of Mr. Flynn.
Was that on the zoning variance?
That'll be number 13, if I might. The parking lot light standards shall be no more than 30 feet. We have no problem with that. Lighting on the exterior of the building shall be shielded, and as stated here, shall be downwardly directed. I would respectfully request that we will shield it, but I don't want to be limited to only downward lighting. I'd like to be able to uplight the tower. Is that acceptable?
Let me ask Flynn, which condition on which item is he referring to?
Sorry. He's referring to, I believe, digit number 13.
Ask for the same thing, I don't want...
In the site plan.
So it's on item 39?
Correct.
The SDR? Okay, thank you.
I would say that we are in agreement with the request to revise that condition, as long as there is the caveat that it complies with our residential adjacency standards.
Agreed.
So shielded.
Comments or questions from the board? Mr. Chairman? We'll start right to left. Commissioner Evans?
Yes, thank you very much. I think we're all sort of of the same mindset, that we'd like to see something happen here, and there have been starts and stops, and over the years, a lot of hope, and we've seen it fizzle. The gentleman that spoke, I wasn't sure if it was Ted or who, but Ted Russell talked about the spirit of Sammy Davis Jr. I had the good pleasure a couple of times to hang out with Mr. D until 2:00 and 3:00 and 4:00 in the morning in his suite up in Lake Tahoe. And one of the things that we talked about was the Moulin Rouge and his experience of when he first performed here, even as a kid with the Will Maston Trio, when he had to stay in a boarding house over on the west side because he couldn't, he couldn't check in and stay in the hotels in that time. Of course, everybody knows that Las Vegas had the moniker of the Mississippi of the West. We were a very... stay in a boarding house over on the West Side, because he couldn't, he couldn't check in and stay in the hotels in that time. Of course, everybody knows that Las Vegas had the moniker of the Mississippi of the West. We were a very segregated community. And actually, he told me that Frank Sinatra was one of the ones that helped break the color barrier.
That's right.
That he, in fact, went to the then owners of the Sands and said--
That's right.
"My man's going to stay here." So I don't know. And then I've talked with Bob Bailey briefly, and my friend Alice Keys, who were involved with the early Moulin Rouge when it first opened. Apparently, had a short life as a casino, I think about six months. And, but during that time, it was, from what everybody tells me, the hippest place in town, where all the musicians, all the entertainers, all the lounge acts would hang out there at the Moulin Rouge late after their shows.
Yep, that's right.
And it was quite the buzz. So in addition to the fact that it is what it is, I think it represents for our community more of a monument of history.
That's exactly right.
And, you know, I appreciate all the development concerns for the area, and it sounds like you've put together a great plan. But, you know, with our saving of the La Concha, the Fifth Street School, we've got a few other projects that, you know, the old post office. I think we, as a community, have begun to turn the corner in terms of recognizing and honoring our young history. And it doesn't get any more historic than the Moulin Rouge.
Well said.
So, I mean, and I wanted to, Margot Wheeler, our director, was kind enough to copy this for me a few weeks ago. I'd like you to put this on the monitor, if you would. Maybe I can get the clerk to do that.
Oh, you have Life Magazine?
The 1955 cover of Life Magazine, when the Moulin Rouge first opened. Even if you look in the far corner, if you can pan back a little bit and pan in to the far right corner in the head--
Is that you, Mr. Evans?
It says Las Vegas is the boom overextended.
Yeah, that's right.
So--
That's right.
I mean--
It's up here.
I think that's kind of funny, that at the time, and the article is a lot about, can Las Vegas sustain the new growth of all these new hotels? The Thunderbird, the Riviera, the Sahara, et cetera. So here we are, we're still having that same discussion 2 million people later. But I just applaud what you do. I hope it comes to fruition, and whatever occurs on that site, that it really becomes the linchpin and the beacon for our West Side and for the history. And my understanding is that early in the, in the early 50s, there was thought that the development of the hotel development, because the Strip was just a, you know, a little collection of motels, but that it would extend up west rather than east, so that the Bonanza corridor would have been populated with hotels. But it just doesn't get any more historic than the Moulin Rouge. And I applaud all the preservationists in our community and forward-minded-thinking people who have, who have kept this alive. Thank you.
We're stewards of a powerful history, and I guarantee you, this will get built.
Mr. Truesdale?
And I do understand the history of the site. And I applaud you for retaining the sign. But I also think, as a planning commission, we need to be realistic about, and expectations. Because I know all the people here want the best for their neighborhood, and they want this to happen. But there are physical limitations to sometimes retaining some of this historical, I mean, let's be honest, this building is a burnt-out hulk for the most part. Okay? And it's going to be demolished for most practical purpose, down to the ground, except as a sign and the tower you're talking about, right?
The sign and the wall that it sits upon. We've got to shore it up right now.
All right. But, so, I just want to be upfront with what we expect, because--
Well, Commissioner Truesdale, don't kill the party now. The music just got good, and the drink got cold, and you turned on the lights.
But you don't want to be here five years from now, looking at the same story. The reality is, this has the potential to be a phenomenal impact on this neighborhood.
That's right.
But what you're presenting us tonight, in scale, project, size, is on par with the Palms.
Yep.
I mean, am I correct? I mean--
Pretty much.
What I didn't want to hear tonight was just the fluff. I wanted you to bring us real details about the project, because that's, when I attended your program the other day--
That's right.
--got real details. And that's important, because the more details we get, the more reality will happen in the project that happens. This shouldn't just be approval of a pretty picture. I mean, we should approve what we're approving. And when we talk about the size and scale, there are impacts on the community. There's traffic studies that have to happen as part of the conditions.
And we agree with those.
There is the chance to invest in this neighborhood around there, not only creating jobs, creating other enhanced opportunities around there. So I believe that this is a great project. I just want to at least ask the question, so we get there. And that's important. This, we're approving zoning and site plan with a lot of detail, heights, scale, and I want to clarify, is the total gaming area that's on this property? Because when I looked at the gaming map, there's several parcels that aren't within the gaming overlay.
That's correct.
And can you address what--
Sure. If you have the plan there, there's a shaded area in there. I believe staff has narratively described what we're proposing. That five and a half acres that was originally, that comprised the Moulin Rouge, is now the limit of which our gaming floor can extend, right? So even through our multi-phase project, that gaming floor cannot extend past what we will have mapped ultimately as a record of survey.
Okay.
So we are in compliance with that. All functions of the building outside that gaming floor can reside in the outboard parcels. Those parcels will then all be Zone C2. And we can have the Performing Arts Center, the garages, central plant, back of house, and retail functions outside that. Okay? But the gaming floor cannot extend past that.
Okay.
We've met with state, we've met with the city attorney. Our gaming attorney has found that it meets the intent of the law, and planning has met and agreed with all of that, so. And that's exactly how we're proposing to build this, and we will conform with all of that.
And you've acquired the additional properties around there--
Yes, we have. We're all--
For the development.
Can you take us through your site plan?
Sure.
Could you put it up?
Got it up on the board there, so thankfully. I didn't bring that. As you, Bonanza's obviously at the bottom. You will have access off of Bonanza, be dropped off-- You know, it's kind of really nice to look at this, I guess. I should really, I can't, can I detach this? No, I can't. If you want to use--
There's another mic there that is on a cord.
Is it, where is it at?
Center mic's also working, too. You're fine. Just talk.
Oh, that's so much better. Thank you very much. And bear in mind, this is, this is more or less what Phase 1 will be, but really, this aerial perspective really tells the story quite nicely. Off of Bonanza here, we will have our ingress and egress. That's the original sign right here, okay? And the wall that it sits upon. And if you bend to the sign, the columns that were originally there have mosaic tile on them. We're going to preserve those. And I think Commissioner Truesdale will have you there, because I want you to witness that. Want to hang on to those. The sign is right here. We're going to hang on to that. The wall that, the sign sits upon, there was a, there was a little bit of an architectural language that we're going to try to preserve. It's about the only language that was there. Otherwise, it was pretty much a box. So we're going to try to keep that. You can see we've got a very sort of modern look. It's not postmodern, it's very modern. The valet folks will be able to bring this up. We're going to ramp up along this side for the hotel entrance. So you'll be able, if you're staying at the hotel, you'll actually arrive on the second floor, come in at an upper mezzanine level. You'll check in here, you'll be able to look over the pool, and this is the original pool area. We're going to try to, we're going to try to hang on to all of those. Those are all Phoenix date palms, and they're very expensive. We've been watering them, keeping them alive. We're going to probably have to move them around a little bit. But that's the original pool area. Then you'll be able to go into the hotel. Beyond that's the Performing Arts Center in the back. You can see it on the plan, if you look at your other exhibits. The garage here, we can valet and self-park here. And then the first phase, we're going to self-park on this side. Second phase, we're going to occupy that with more gaming floor, another garage back here, central plants here. All services come in off of McWilliams, okay? And the second tower will reside over on this side, when the time comes. But we're going to know so much more by building, you know, this isn't taking a great deal more than what we originally had, okay? So we're going to walk before we run. But we had to ask for what we wanted to do for the full master plan, for the entitlement purposes, okay? So I would guarantee you that we'll probably come back before you, before, you know, in the next, in the following years, to tell you exactly what we're going to do. But I think we're defining the volume, the height restriction. We're trying to get an idea of what we're going to build, and to maintain our plan within the confines of the law. Okay? Does that make sense? Any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Truesdale? Any more questions?
Actually, I--
Mr. Steyman?
Oh, you finish.
No, I think it, like I say, I do think it's a great project. I think there's some things that you do have in this plan that it makes sense to articulate. You have a Performing Arts Center that--
1,200 seats.
Has got 1,200 seats, which is a great asset for the neighborhood there.
Yes.
There's other services here that, that I think it's important for people to feel that--
Right.
They're getting a complete project--
Yes.
Rather than, you know, a--
Just a slot bar. We did not want to do that.
That's--
There were folks that wanted to do that before, and we said, no.
I wanted to say. Okay.
That was not the intent of what we wanted to do. We wanted to bring this back. And it needs to be a center for entertainment, music, and a place for this neighborhood to enjoy it. This is going to be a hybrid project, ladies and gentlemen. This is not going to be a Palms, for example, I don't think. I think we're going to be able to attract the neighborhood here during the week. And on the weekend, I think folks that may not even stay here are going to come here. I think we're going to be attracting people from all over the planet. And so we're going to be something different. We're going to be something great. And we're going to, we're going to, we're going to bring it back. And in the face of everybody tearing down the frontier and the Sands, those names are gone. They're only living in the neon museum. We're bringing back Moulin Rouge. We're not renaming it. We're bringing it back. That's what's great about this.
Thank you. Commissioner Steyman?
Yes. You touched upon where I was going to go, just right now, and it relates to the marketing of the product.
It's hard not to.
Yeah, if you don't market the product, this is going to be another issue.
That's right.
Okay, big time. And as I've been here, probably less than anybody up here, I have observed this city forming itself as a strip, a downtown, now a south strip, and neighborhood. And when I came here and lived, started living up in Sun City for the elderly, I-- The only place we could go at that time, if we wanted to drop coin, was at the Texas or the Fiesta.
That's right.
Okay. And if, please. And so now, we develop the Rampart, the Sun Coast, and the Red Rock. And we do, it's amazing number of casinos in a very small area, but I see tremendous rooftops being created and created. So I need to ask you, you're going to create a new zoning, or a new gaming area, in my opinion. This is, this appears to be a new game. I don't know whether you're going to tie yourself into downtown and say, we're part of downtown, or we are the West Side gaming area. I'd like you to define how you see your market developing as you go forth, because if you don't develop the market, you know what that leads to.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
Well, first of all, this isn't new. It's kind of, we've been here. This gaming enterprise has been here, this site. And just so you know, we're not part of downtown. We're going to be calling ourselves, as Robert said, Uptown Las Vegas. So I think this is the genesis and the catalyst that will see this whole area get redeveloped. And we are in the redevelopment area. We're on the radar for the mayor and the Office of Business Development to do what we're doing. The street that leads from Grand Central Parkway, the New City Center Drive, is being widened, beautified, and takes us right to Bonneville, or to Bonanza, forgive me, and brings us right to this property. So we will have that tie, whether it's pedestrian or vehicular. And I see that as a bit of an umbilical cord, and I can't help but to think that all the freeway improvements that have occurred recently aren't going to also increase our ingress and egress to this area. So how we market it, believe me, we've got a whole marketing department. If they want to come up here and talk about that, they are on this like nothing I've ever seen. Trust me. I mean, I get to sit in really great meetings, as opposed to my other clients. They invite me to sit in these things, and I'm finding out exactly how they're going to really make this thing work. The gaming operators, the hoteliers, the marketing folks, they have structured a team that is unparalleled, and second to none. So it's going to, it's going to work.
What I add to this, you know, obviously, this downtown, the Union Park, obviously World Market Center, which I've been involved with for many years here, since that inception. And I've had this vision when I met with the principals of the Moulin Rouge Development Corporation, that they had a specific niche. And the niche, and obviously, is the culture that they can bring back and the traditional history of Las Vegas. I mean, that's sell in itself, but the neighborhood is a very sensitive neighborhood, and the group, the principals, as well as developer, are very concerned about their feelings on this. We have created outreach programs for the local community, and that will continue to go on as we progressively grow, and working with planning and the different departments of staff regarding traffic, security, and this whole nature. But again, as far as the marketing side of it, it'll take care of this place. I mean, we'll have entertainment second to none. And obviously, you go back to the days of 1955, we can always go look back, and everybody still remembers, you hear these conversations that go back, whereas the service, or the professional champion of the world shaking your hand at the door and greeting of what would really, the personable aspects of what that casino really was, even though it was short-lived, but what it was in service, the entertainment, the lifestyle, and then how comfortable the people were when they were there, as they integrated in this hotel casino. And we plan on bringing that back, and the history back, and conserving that, and bringing it as it was in 1955, and progressing as you grow throughout the casino. So I think it'll be an aspect that's second to none. Nobody has really, really achieved 100 percent in this town. They've tried to take shots at it, but this historical monument has the best presidents to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Holbein.
Thank you.
Commissioner Goins?
Commissioner Quinn?
Quickly, sirs. What excites me about this project? It's me on the end here, the only woman. I've lived here my entire life.
Margot's here.
Well, Margot, but Margot knows everything, and I just know little. But what I do know is, living here my entire life, what sets apart the best from the rest is when you become a community partner. And you have the ability to go into a neighborhood that needs you more than you need them. You have areas where you can reach out to schools that need book bags, that need lunches, that need, you have variety daycare behind you. And my judgment of your success will be when I see you on the news as a community pride partner. And I'm not going to mention my favorite community pride partner, hotel and casino, but I will say, we have companies in this town that they take their resources, and they spread them throughout the valley, and they make people's lives better, not because they work for them, but because they live near them. And my prayer for you, and my goal for you, is that we can call you one day a community pride partner. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Seeing no more questions or comments, I'm ready to make a motion, or ask for a motion. Regardless, excuse me, Vice Chairman.
With regard to number 39, I know the planning department in my office has been involved in trying to determine exactly where that non-restricted gaming would be. If we could have the, the TV people pull up that site plan where it showed the shaded areas of the existing gaming sites? I can't see it, I see me.
Plans on the screen?
And, and Mr. Chairman, if the applicant could point out exactly where he proposes the gaming to be, and if, if that's considered to be the existing gaming, non-restricted gaming area?
Yes, I mean, I-
Mr. Scott, if he points on that, we won't be able to see it.
I see one in pink and one in-
I will tell you that, see the dark, I mean, in your, I don't know if your colors are the same as mine, but the dark purple color-
Right.
Is, our gaming floor does not go beyond that area.
And, and-
And it shall not, in any phase, present and future.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I could, uh, and what do you call it? Do you call it existing non-restricted gaming area, or do you call, what do you call that on, on your map? I'm, I'm just saying that because I think we need to have a condition on the SDR which reflects the fact that they can't go beyond that.
I think it's, it's pretty much delineated number four.
I think Andy from staff put something on the overhead, which you could probably point to to depict that.
I may have the old, um, set of conditions.
Can, can we, can you see, Mr. Scott, where he's pointing at on that diagram?
Yes, sir. My number four says existing lot line.
That defined area was, we worked with the mapping department, it's defined in legal descriptions and that nature.
So that, that, that legal description actually becomes a record of survey that will, that remains on every drawing I produce.
Okay, that's what we're doing. Okay, apparently, in talking with the planning director, we're gonna be taking out four and five, conditions four and five in SDR 26449, and we'll be replacing it with the following condition. Location and operation of gambling games-
Oh, yeah.
Slot machines, a sports pool or a race book, as defined by Las Vegas Municipal Code 6.40.020, or any other type or method of gambling or wagering allowed by the Nevada Gaming Commissioner, Commission, together known as gambling games, is permitted only on property within the shaded area bounded by the dash line marked on this map as the grandfathered non-restricted gaming area. No gambling game shall be located on property outside of the grandfathered non-restricted gaming area, and no gambling game shall occur or be operated on any property outside of the grandfathered non-restricted gaming area.
Thank you.
And I apologize, I have that already, so I thought you had that, so.
Nope.
So I apologize.
So noted. No more questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion on item 36.
Regarding item number 36, zoning 26451, recommend approval, subject to, there are no conditions, recommend approval.
Motion for approval on item 36, please cast your votes. That motion has passed. Item 37.
Variance 26453, recommend approval, subject to all staff conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 37, please cast your vote. That motion has been approved. Item 38, please cast your vote, or I entertain a motion.
Special use permit 26452, recommend approval, subject to all staff conditions.
Please cast your vote. And item 39, motion?
Site development review 26449, recommend approval, subject to all staff conditions as amended by the city attorney.
And just to be clear, that's deleting conditions four and five and adding the condition that Mr. Scott wrote in.
And was there also an amendment to condition 13 as well?
To condition 13 as well, to remove the downward directed language and comply with residential adjacency.
Very good. Motion for approval with amendments as stated, please cast your votes. Before you guys go, let's introduce, um-
Well, the owners-
Five heartbeats or something.
We got Dale Scott, Dale Scott and Michael Van Avery, Republic Riverland and Moulin Rouge Development Corporation, Chauncey Moore in the back there, he's also at Moulin Rouge Development Corporation, Chris Richardson, he did all the drawings here, he's in my office. Um, who else here?
Looks like the average white man, it boils the men mix.
We got a marketing director out there too somewhere, and that's, uh, yeah, there he is, right there, Alan Glover. And so, if you have any marketing questions, you can ask him. All right, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Can you make sure when you get to city council to bring your site plans with you?
I'll do it.
Thank you.
I'll do it, thank you.
And this all goes forward to council on April 2nd.
Thank you. Hold on, residents of Ward 5, y'all stay right there. The next three items are in Ward 5 on Martin Luther King and Bonanza, and I want y'all to partake in this as well. This'll only take a couple of minutes, and it concerns your community, and we need your input. Item 43, VAR 26447, applicant owner DFA LLC. Could I have you guys quiet, please? To allow a 1,200 square foot off-premises digital billboard sign flush with the wall of a parking structure where 672 square feet is permitted, and to allow the off-premise digital billboard sign to be erected 58 feet above the elevation of the freeway where 30 feet above the elevation of the freeway is the maximum allowed at the southwest corner of Bonanza Road and Martin Luther King. Item 44, ROC 26778, request for a review of conditions to modify condition 15 of an improved site development plan, review SDR 13904, which stated onsite off-premise advertising, advertising billboard signs shall be removed prior to the issuance of building permits. Item 45, for a proposed 20-foot by 60-foot off-premise digital billboard sign flush with the wall of the parking structure. Staff?
In regard to the variance in site plan review, which are for the billboard to be placed on the side of the parking garage, staff finds no hardship which necessitates a billboard almost twice the size permitted by the zoning code and recommends denial. In regard to the review of condition which is regarded, pardon me, which is related to an existing building along Bonanza, staff is unable to support this request and recommends denial.
Thank you. Applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Robert Grossbeck, 145 East Reno, Las Vegas, I'll be half the owner and applicant.
Mr. Grossbeck, are you able to hear?
I can hear fine.
Go ahead.
If you're comfortable.
Thank you.
Can you hear me okay on the mic here?
Yeah, ladies and gentlemen, um, excuse me, ladies and gentlemen in the audience, we, we are moving on with our scheduled business. If you could, please take the celebration outside, or you are in Ward 5, you can listen to this item which affects you as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do I need the handheld mic, or can you hear me?
We can hear you clearly.
Great, thank you. Just to orient everyone here on the site, we've all seen this many times, this is the proposed tower here, looking down. The, the signage which we're actually looking for approval on here is on the eastern, southeastern corner of the structure. And to give everybody some perspective here, with the widening project at MLK and Bonanza, we have, well, we had two billboards, and there's really no secret how we came to the 1,200 square feet. We had a sign right here on, on Bonanza, and then we had a sign right in here on MLK. The MLK sign has been removed, the, um, the current sign on Bonanza is going to encroach on the right-of-way and will have to be removed at some point. And really, that's the review of condition, of condition 15. We're simply asking that we be allowed to keep that billboard in place until we pull permits, and at that time, we'll of course remove the, the signage. Each of these signs is two-sided, and each is 288 square feet, plus minus an inch or two. So that's really how we've, we've come to, to the current request, which is about 1,200 square feet. As you can see, we've just put the Ace Hardware sign on there just to orient everyone. The, the sign is actually cantilevered somewhat. It is referenced in staff report as flush against the structure, it is not. It comes out, I believe, at about eight degrees on the right side there. And our, our design people believe that that's appropriate and it's necessary to meet the, the traffic that'll be heading northwest there on the flyover in 95. Granted, the sign is larger than, than is typically permitted, but if you look at this sign in light of what we're trying to accomplish, we think it makes good sense, we think it meets with the aesthetic requirements of the project, and we don't believe creates any visual adverse impacts to, to the neighborhood or any development, development in the vicinity. And really, what that sign comprises at 1,200 feet is basically a compilation of the, the two signs I, as I indicated, on both sides. The second issue here, of course, is the request to raise the sign beyond the, the limits under Title 19. And as you can see here, you know, our design people have looked at this extensively, and they believe that if the sign were 30-foot, as required by code, it simply wouldn't mesh, it wouldn't flow, and in fact, would probably be tied in with the, the plantings that you can see, the Palms. So we think that in light of the elevated flyover coming over in the, the new grade, I think everyone's aware here now, the current grade in 95 is about 30 feet higher than what was, was previously there prior to the construction. So with that said, we'd ask for approval. We think it makes good sense, we're taking sign as down from two points on the project, we're putting it on a single LED on the structure, and we simply believe it makes good sense, and it's consistent with the design of the project. And I'll be happy to address any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience for or against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board from left to right? Commissioner Steyman?
Uh, Mr. Grossbeck, make sure I understand, this sign, a digital sign, that changes every, how many seconds?
Well, I, I don't know how many second, it does change. Well, I've heard numbers, I guess the state has actually adopted rules on how often it can change.
Does it face east?
Yes.
Okay. When, the other day when I was taking a run on, up 95, heading west, I came through that area and I looked where the building would be. I, I don't understand. It's almost impossible to see this sign as you're going westbound with the spaghetti bowl in its way, and all the, the mesh that goes on. And I'm surprised that Mr. Ahern's gonna wanna put a sign on that side. And, and the second thing I wanna say about a digital sign, there is one down on the south freeway on 215, near, I think Decatur, something like that. It's very interesting sign, because it has on occasion caught my eye on something I saw, and it flashes off, and so what do you do? You stay fixed on it while you're driving to see it again. And I'm not sure we've all thought about that particular aspect of these changing signs that go on, but I find myself doing it, and I worry about that part of it. But in this case, I worry even more about the location at westbound, looking at it, and truly, the spaghetti bowl and everything else is in the way, and I'm wondering why.
Thank you, Commissioner. I, I don't have an answer for that other than say that the experts tell us that that's where it should be, how it should be, and that's where it should be positioned. I have no expertise in that area. They'd say it makes good sense, and it, it makes the most sense for the structure and the traffic pattern.
Well, it does probably make the most sense if the spaghetti bowl wasn't there, because you wouldn't wanna put it for the eastbound people way over on the other side of 95 trying to see it on that side of the building.
Right.
It probably wouldn't work very well. I would understand that. But, uh, you know, I'm not, I'm not necessarily opposed to it, I just wonder why we're doing it in that position.
And as I said, Commissioner, that's a fair question.
Okay.
I'll defer to the experts there. I guess one of the issues, because of the relocation, we, we think we've established a hardship with the widening project on MLK and Bonanza. I mean, theoretically, we could come back and ask for polls, separate polls there on the front edge, and we don't think that makes any sense for anyone. And we want, we don't wanna poll there, period, and we'd like to put it up on the structure.
No, I agree. You, you're, you're losing a couple, and this, this is a good solution, but I, I just wonder about the experts who decide where these things go, as to where they think.
That's a fair, fair comment.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Dunham, did you have a comment? Commissioner Truesdale?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. I understand the building here, and it's, and you're getting rid of some signs today, and you're wanting to put the digital, and I, and I understand the height because of the ramp, and, and I, it's, it may be a little larger than what I think we should be doing. My, my biggest question for staff and city attorney is, and as I asked you previously, we approved a similar sign configuration on another building facing the freeway east of here, and went through a lot of work to come up with some solutions that were better. And at the end of the day, NDOT couldn't do this, they couldn't do that, and we wound up, after we approved something, we wound up having more signs thrust upon us, and it's almost like, well, we can't do anything about it, you just gotta take them. How do we guarantee ourselves, as a city and as a community, that whatever we work out here is what it is? Otherwise, I, I just don't wanna see after the fact, whatever happens, four more signs show up and we got no choice because, well, we widened this and, and we got that right back. We widened that, we got that right back, and we wind up with four signs on this building or, or poll signs anyway. So how do we, uh, Mr. Scott, how do we protect?
These signs, these off-premise signs are still required to have your discretionary approval. I believe it's unprecedented in this city to have a 1,200 square foot sign in one location. There's nowhere in the city or the state that I know of, other than maybe the big giant, you know, the ones for Treasure Island or one of those signs that is 1,200 square feet, but to have an off-premise billboard sign of 1,200 square feet is unprecedented. And I, I think we're gonna get into a really dangerous area if we start allowing property owners to combine signs into one mega sign, and you're gonna probably see a lot more applications like this if that's, if that's allowed here. You would still have discretionary approval because it does require special use permit in order to erect a sign, so you still would have that discretion to determine whether or not it was compatible or harmonious with the, with the area. So that's probably the only way, is to just determine that there will not be any more signs, or there's enough signs in this area, and you'll have to go with your discretionary approval.
I understand that. In, in that regard, then I, I probably, you know, little, view this a little differently because I just, what we went through on the other building, we wound up, all I see is signage. I don't even, I, I've lost what could be one of the most amazing green buildings, all I see is signs now when I go by it. You don't even see the building anymore. And that's, to me, is unfortunate for, and I, and I don't have a problem with the advertising, I just think that we can put too many, you know, free lunch signs on the sides of buildings and destroy what we're trying to create, so.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I, I appreciate the concerns, and I certainly appreciate Mr. Scott's comments, but I, and maybe Ms. Wheeler can help me or staff, but the building that we are talking of, the signage it is on the building, there are two signs actually there, and, and I've been told that each sign is roughly 30 by 30 square, is that roughly the signage dimension we're talking about? But I guess my point is simply this, those two signs are dramatically larger than the signage square footage we're proposing here. And I, I can't comment to council's comment that this is unprecedented, I simply don't know that. I agree that it's larger than standard, but I think the situation here is unique. We've had two signs by virtue of the, the right-of-way improvements that have been forced to be removed, and we think that this is a, this is a sound solution to this issue. And given the scope and size of this project, it certainly doesn't overwhelm the building. And as I, and that is the dimension as you see it here, so.
Do you have a rendering of your sign?
Uh, this sign is to scale here that I put up on, on the building. You mean the actual signage?
Could you point to the sign on that render?
The Ace Hardware.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner, Vice Chairman Trowbridge?
Yes, I think what we're dealing with here is, is, I know it's unprecedented to have a, a sign of this size on a, on a building, but all over town, we have 20 by 60-foot billboards. And what we're accomplishing here is something that would be in proper scale with the size of the, the wall that it's gonna be on. And so it doesn't overwhelm it or totally dominate what you're, what you're looking at. Also, I think that the opportunity to take what would be authorized signing off of some of the streets, streets, you know, over on MLK or the street there, I think it's to our advantage to get those, off those streets and move them around where it kind of benefits everybody. It'll be more visible to the people on the, on the freeway, and at the same time, less intrusive to the people that are traveling on the, on the surface streets. So I don't have any problems with the request.
I just have a quick question, if I may.
Commissioner Evans?
Um, I, I do understand the concern, but sort of a rhetorical question with regard to the county. I, I understand we don't, you know, have anything to do with the county, but how do you justify an absolute model or an entertainer staying in a, where they wrap the entire building, which is in effect a sign, and yet, this would be denied because it would be too small? It seems a little inconsistent to me. Do they have some special provision that allows that, or, I mean, a, a, a sign is a sign is a sign, even if it's transparent from the other side? So maybe somebody can answer that for me.
We'll try to get an answer. Commissioner Truesdale?
I look at that and say, those are, those are hotels, those are resorts, they're entertainment, they've got, um, major sign overlays for each property, and they've got a longstanding code. This is not a casino, this is not any of those types of buildings. So I, I think we get off track by even considering that type of signage here. We, we're inundated with things driving along the freeway, and we just have to be sensitive to what, what is too much, and I, I, I'm not sure how this fits, but I, I am concerned that we wind up having more signs on the backside of this that I, I mean, additionally, that I just, I'm, I'm concerned about.
And Commissioner, we're willing to be conditioned that this will be the only sign, off-premise sign on the structure, any way you can.
Chairman?
Chairman, sir.
Commissioner Quinn?
My concern is that being that your client, Mr. Ahern, is so well-respected in the community as you are, that if we do in fact approve this, it would be very difficult for me to look at somebody else and tell them no. And pretty soon, it's gonna be one more, one more, one more. And, you know, I'm just not gonna support this because I'm afraid that it's just the beginning of many.
Mr. Chairman, my last comment, if I may. Commissioner Quinn, thank you for your candor. I think this is different than the project you grappled with over there with the Water Authority Building. You know, bear in mind, we could have come in and asked for two signs on opposite ends of the building. We don't want that. We're cognizant of the concerns that you've raised, we think that this best addresses the issue. I'm not saying it's perfect, but we think it makes a lot of sense and it fits with what we're trying to do there, which is a huge capital improvement for this area.
Thank you. I'm gonna support it because I, just what you said to that point, I think if we don't, you're probably gonna come back with some other type of sign, which is gonna be, wanna extend it high up in the air and maybe a 14 by 48 on a pole way up there with a boom on the top of it to say that that's Ahern. I think it'll be an aesthetic improvement to this area. I think, again, with what we just approved a couple of items ago, I'm just trying to look further to the future, I kinda see that corridor there now coming to life and making its change, and it's more of a modern architecture with a digital readout type of sign. With that, one of my concerns was on your rendering that you have on the building with your parking structure. Are you amenable to putting a sort of a mesh on that parking garage to cut, so you don't look straight through it?
Yeah, a screening?
A screening.
You know, councilman, which, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Go right ahead.
No, and that issue's been raised recently. I'm obviously not involved in the design aspect, but I will talk to Mr. Ahern. Staff has raised that issue. He's a reasonable man. We'll sit down and talk about it and whatever we can do to, you know, to make everybody happy that obviously fits within the development.
I guess you don't have the permission to say if you're gonna put that on there tonight.
I do not.
But staff, if that's one of the wishes, is that something that would have to come back to us? Or is that something I could ask to be put on the SUP as a condition?
If I may, I defer to the City Attorney. The application on the SDR is for the site plan that affects the parking structure. So the chairman's question is whether or not the mesh would be considered appropriate when considering the billboard on the parking structure.
I don't think so. I think they're separate items. I mean, wasn't this building already approved under another SDR?
Yes, it was.
Yeah, it would need to go back on that SDR. This SDR only concerns the sign.
You can make that comment and the applicant's heard that and we'll move forward with that.
Indianapolis is agreeable to take it back to the owner's request.
Absolutely. Certainly talk about it.
Without any more further questions, we'll take a motion.
Well, I'd like to, is there a special use permit that will come on this?
No, this is a variance for the sign.
There's no special use for this one?
No.
Ready? Commissioner Steinman, are you satisfied?
I thought these signs had to have special use permits.
I think it's an existing sign that was already, if I may be planning, I think it's an existing sign and they want to change the existing sign to make it much larger.
Relocating on the same parcel.
That's a little far-fetched.
That is actually correct, though. We're moving to two.
But that's very far-fetched. I mean, I'm tearing down two and putting up one, and we don't have to do an SUP for that, I don't understand.
It's, sir, if I may, it's the same as what occurred on the other building we've been discussing here tonight, where they took a sign down and relocated, freestanding, and then relocated it onto the structure.
It may have been a non-conforming outdoor advertising structure and probably didn't have a special use permit. That's probably what it was. I don't know for sure, but maybe planning would know that.
Commissioner. Commissioner Truesdale?
I'm gonna take a, if no one has any other comments, I'll take a stab at a motion.
Go for it.
On, with regards to VAR 26447, the variance to go from the 672-foot sign to 1,200-foot sign, I guess I wanna do this in two parts. I don't have a problem with height, but I do wanna follow staff's recommendation for the size. So I guess motion would be, how do we do this?
It'll be, you can't separate them, so it'll be for denial.
Right, can't separate them.
So, okay. Can I approve the height with the smaller area?
Can you amend it?
That's less than what's being.
I guess you could approve the height at 672 square feet.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the height because I do believe the ramp does change it, but restrict the sign to the 672-square-foot area.
So then, if I may.
Can we clarify that motion?
If I may, the variance then, the maker of the motion is recommending approval of the variance, item 43, but with the condition that the size shall not exceed 672 square feet. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's a better way to approach it.
So what are you saying, instead of a 1,200-square-foot sign, it will be 672?
Yes, the 14 by 48 typical.
Motion's on the floor, cast your vote. That motion has passed, item 44.
With regards to the review of condition for the removal of the sign along Bonanza, which is being asked to be relocated to the west under the review of condition, motions for approval.
Actually, no, for clarification, that sign was going to be incorporated with the larger square footage on the structure, those two signs. It would go away.
Go away?
Well, obviously, our goal was to have it go away to a larger sign on the structure.
Then I'll make a motion to follow staff's recommendation for denial under review of condition.
Point of a clarification, so voting to deny it says what, Ms. Wheeler?
Says the condition stays the same.
Well, before you vote, Mr. Chairman, the issue on that is simply to pull that sign down, allow us to keep it there until we pull permits. I think that's the condition, isn't it, Ms. Wheeler?
Yes, and that's why I was surprised when you said that it had to do with the size. This is.
No, no, I apologize. Yeah, it does not.
Right. The issue is whether or not they're required to remove the sign, the existing freestanding sign, prior to the issuance of any building permits being issued on the property, or if they would be required to remove the freestanding sign at the time that they place the new sign on the side of the building.
That is correct. We're just asking for an extension to delay it.
Delay it.
To delay it until we pull permits. That's exactly.
Then.
A yes vote would be you would be supporting the delay.
Correct. That would be our request.
A no vote would mean you would not and you want it to happen right away.
And that, I'll amend my motion to reflect that. My motion is for approval.
To support the request to extend it. Motion on the floor for approval, please cast your vote. That motion has been approved, item 45.
This is the 1,200-square-foot. With regard to SDR 26639 and VAR, the review of condition, the owner's request.
Yeah, this is for the 1,200-square-foot sign.
This would be motion, this would be for approval with a maximum of 672 square feet.
Motion's on the floor for approval, and that would be for a sign of 672 square feet. Please cast your votes. Point of clarification, Commissioner Evans?
Yeah, I'm.
On this one, Commissioner, you're saying yes to the billboard sign, but only at 672 square feet.
Yes. So the digital sign in that location on that building, but for a smaller square footage.
Correct.
Correct.
So I'm just a little concerned because that's not the application for us, but I'm, and I wasn't, I didn't have a problem with the size. So I guess my no vote would reflect, I don't want my no vote to reflect that I don't think it's an appropriate place.
Well, no, it will reflect that you do not support, you're saying no to the 672. Because originally, it was for 1,200. Commissioner Truesdale made a motion to keep the height, but shrink it to 672. Now we're voting to approve.
At a reduced rate.
Which would be 14 by 48 instead of 60 by 20 by 60.
Okay.
So please cast your votes. Okay, that motion has passed.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Item 47.
And those are our final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days to the city clerk.
Item 47, RQR 26324, applicant Lionel Sawyer and Collins, owner Fisher Brothers Las Vegas LLC, required review of an approved special use permit, U016892, which allowed a 40-foot-tall, 14-by-48-foot off-premise advertising billboard sign at 2,900 Cyrus Avenue.
Mr. Chairman, I think that one's been held in abeyance.
Oh, pardon me, 48, excuse me. Item SUP 23285, applicant owner Metro PCS Nevada LLC, owner DNW, for a proposed 10-foot extension to an existing 60-foot-tall wireless communication facility, non-stealth, at 120 North Jones. Staff?
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, staff is of the opinion that the additional height will impact the residences to the north and to the west of this site and consequently recommend denial of the request.
Thank you. Applicant?
Yes, my name's William Daley, 3157 North Rainville Boulevard. I'm representing Metro PCS. Metro PCS is a wireless communications carrier, getting ready to launch a new system here in the market. It's a phone that is aimed at a, more of a working man's phone system in terms of it is, no long-term contracts, monthly payment, unlimited minutes. And we're requesting the additional height mainly because of the coverage area to the south, specifically the southeast with the height of US 95 and sound walls and such to that direction to provide coverage on the south side of the US 95 freeway.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience for or against this item? Please come forward. Mr. Farlow?
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. On the overhead there, in the upper left-hand corner, I see a green area. Is that a park? And if that's a park, I wonder if the cell tower couldn't go there instead so we'd get some revenue out of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to comment on this?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board. My name is Teddy Russell, resident of Las Vegas. Knowing Councilwoman Tarkanian very well, and also knowing that this is one of our good mayor's hot buttons, in fact, he actually suggested that we have a contest to get rid of these non-stealth antennas. This thing is just not going to fly. I don't believe the Councilwoman, I'm not sure, but I suspect that Councilwoman Tarkanian did not approve or was not in office to approve the original non-stealth tower, the rather anathema with us now. To me, it's a sad thing that it's there, but we're not going to continue it. I recommend that this be not approved. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board? Commissioner Quinn?
Representing Ward 1, non-stealth is unacceptable. And to look at this is not what I want my neighbors or my constituents to look at. It's not good enough in Ward 2, it's not good enough in Ward 3 or 4 or 5 or 6, so it's not good enough for us. This is unpleasing to the eye, and I'm sure that your company's gonna do great, but you have to make this look better for my neighbors. So I would move to deny this right away unless there's further discussion because it's absolutely unacceptable.
There is a proposed motion on the floor. Would any other commissioners like to comment prior to voting?
I just wanna make a comment that the write-up on this states that although residential adjacency standards may not be applicable to single-family residents on the west and the north side of the property, the view corridors from the backyards of these homes will be further degraded by the additional height. It is not single-family on the north.
Right.
Okay, so I want that clear, that it is apartments right back there behind it and not single-family people. So that should be taken into consideration.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments? Commissioner Quinn, can you please restate your motion and we will take a vote.
Thank you. My motion is for denial on RQR 26, oh, I'm sorry.
It's actually SUP.
SUP, I'm sorry.
23285.
23285. Denial for this non-stealth design at this time, but we'd love for you to come back with something that looks better. So we are, my motion is for denial.
Sir, hold on.
Could I address the comment about making it look better? Just.
Motion's on the floor.
I realize that, I just never got a chance to comment once you made the comment. I was just hoping I might be addressed it a little bit.
There's a motion on the floor. We'll cast a vote. If you wanna stay with us for probably about another 15 minutes, we'll be at the citizens' participation portion and you may speak. We can't act on it, but you can speak. Motion's on the floor for denial, please cast your vote.
I'm gonna have to stand because my mother-in-law owns property or lives within this notification area and I didn't notice before.
Please cast your vote. And that motion has carried.
And that denial is final action in the absence of an appeal to the city clerk within 10 days.
Item 49, SUP 26391, applicant owner 701 Shadow LLC for a proposed mixed-use development at 701 Shadow Lane. Related item, item 50, SDR 26390, major amendment to an approved site plan review, SDR 5213, to add a fourth story consisting of 10 residential units to an approved three-story, 31,293-square-foot medical office development. Staff?
The proposal is consistent with the standards of the medical district and staff recommends approval.
Applicant?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Jeff Albrecht, 701 Bridger Avenue, Suite 540, Las Vegas. With me is Louis Carnesal of Tower Realty and Development on behalf of the owner, 701 Shadow Lane LLC, as well as Mr. John Lopman, the architect, who are here for any questions you may have.
This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience for or against this item? Please come forward. Same none. We'll close the public hearing. Questions or comments by the board? Commissioner Steinman?
Well, maybe the architect could advise me as to why it was necessary to put 23 air conditioning condensers on the ground floor, on the ground, facing the county building to the north.
Actually, we weren't the architects on the three-story.
That's not a good answer, but maybe you have the answer to it.
Perhaps the owner can.
I have the answer. That was their split units and because of the height.
Could you put your name and address on the record, please?
Louis Carnesal of Tower Realty and Development, were the developers of the project at 701 Bridger Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada. The original design of the project, because of the height limitations, allowed very little access for the split units, the type of air conditioning units for the project. There will be landscape that's planted in that area, but it doesn't seem to be. There will be landscape that's planted in that area, but it doesn't seem to be anywhere near.
It is ugly.
So we'll certainly commit to add to some more mature landscape to...
Yeah, the landscaping is minimal, it's never gonna do it. It's sitting on cement blocks that are teetering already, but it's just ugly. I mean, I don't know, understand that kind of design. Why couldn't we have air-conditioned the building in general? Why did we go to individual? Was it for metering?
Well, yeah, it's a separately metered, and it's a design for the buildings, it's the most efficient use of energy for that, but we can certainly address those concerns with additional landscape.
I'm shocked we allowed that.
I appreciate that, that project, and we certainly will address that.
Okay. Any more questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Evans?
I just, I simply want to say, I think this is a perfect place for a mixed-use project, and I wish you all the luck in the world, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on item 49.
Mr. Chairman, with regards to item 49, I'll make a motion for approval subject to all staff's conditions.
Motion on the floor on item 49 for approval, please cast your votes. That motion has passed. Item 50?
With regards to item 50, SDR 26390, motions for approval subject to all staff's recommendations, and do we have to add the condition about the additional landscaping on the site plan, or would just, so we'll add the additional condition that the land, the owner will add additional landscaping to screen those ground units, on the north side of the building?
Motion on the floor with an added condition, please cast your vote, and that motion wants for approval. And that motion has carried.
And those are final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Are you guys clear on that?
Yes.
Okay.
You won't see those air-conditioners.
Thank you very much. Item 52, SUP 26427, applicant Clarence Long, owner Decatur Shopping Center Associates LP, for an extension of an existing social service provider at 1401 North Decatur Boulevard, Suite Number 3 and Number 4. Staff?
This commercial site is suitable for the proposed use, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you.
My name is Clarence Long, and I reside at 901 Oak Island, North Las Vegas. And we've been at that facility since 99, and it just got too small for us, and the previous owners stepped aside, and I took over, and picked up the suite next door, which is an additional 1,100 feet. We have 12-stud meetings there from 8:00 in the morning until 8:00 at night, lasting anywhere from an hour to two hours. And we, you know, we'd be just doing great. There's a lot of folks that come through there and get help. We just need a little bit more room.
Okay, thank you very much. This is a public hearing, anybody in the audience want to speak for or against this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Oh. This is a public, I'll reopen the public hearing, is anybody for or against this item? Please come forward. Are you guys all in support?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let me, just for sake of time, instead of being redundant, please state your name and address for the record. If this gentleman speaks first, and you agree with all his points, you may just want to mention I agree with the previous speaker, okay? There are two microphones, feel free to use both of them. Name and address for record, sir?
My name is Dan Ramsberg, I reside at 6453 Bristol Way, and as long as the council is ready to approve this motion, I appreciate it. I've been going there for a long time, and I'm, it's served me well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, good for you.
My name's Dennis Winslow, I live at 4408 St. Andrews Circle, Las Vegas. I've been attending there for 10 years, and it's been a great asset to me.
So you're in favor?
And I'm in favor of this, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Myrna Winslow, I live at 4408 St. Andrews Circle. I agree with everything everybody else said, I just want to add that not only has this helped me and the people that are here, but countless others, so to deny it would be a travesty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir?
My name is Rick McGee, I reside at 2,500 Apricot Lane. I concur with those people that's been here. We assist a lot of people with getting their lives together.
Thank you.
My name is Cheryl Harris, I live at 4913 Mondale Road. I concur with everyone else, and it is a great help to that area right there, and to our community.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
My name's David Harris, I live at 4913 Mondale Road. I've been coming to that, this meeting's place for quite a few years, and it's saved my life. I don't know what I'd have done without it, and I'm definitely for it.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, we will close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the board? Commissioner Quinn?
It's really nice to have you come up here and ask for more room, and not less room. I took my last drink 18 years ago, and I didn't have to go to your program, but it's nice to know that it's there, so it is with my great pleasure that I hope that I can make the motion for approval for this, so that you guys can keep helping others, and I just only hope that you come back in two years for more room.
Thank you. Seeing no, Commissioner Evans?
With that, I don't need to say anything further.
Commissioner Quinn, the floor is yours.
I would love to make a motion for approval for item SUP 26427, for more room, and for your special use permit, and my only hope for you is that you're back here for more room soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor for approval, please cast your votes. That motion has passed.
And that goes forward to council on April 2nd.
It has passed. Thank you. Mr. Long, I don't know what you're doing over there, but if you got a remedy for some of these kids that's running these streets and doing what they're doing, I see in your application it says you don't use any professional counselors or anything like that, so I think you probably are taking that old-fashioned approach. And so, we all maybe want to filtrate you in some of these high schools, and let you talk to some of these kids at recess or somewhere while they're catching a bus.
Be more than happy to do so.
Thank you. Citizens' participation, item 53. Citizens' participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. No subject may be acted upon by the planning commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. The public hearing is now open, Mr. Farlow?
Thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Commissioner Evans, I totally agree with your comments when you're addressing Mr. Genzer, and I would like to, in the February 2008 issue of the Progressive Magazine, in the article, "Hell is a Gated Community," I'd like to, one paragraph reads, "But the market may have the last word on America's internal gated communities. Hell is a gated community," announced the Seracote Herald Tribune last June, reporting that market research by the big home builder, Polte Homes, found that no one under 50 wants to live in them, so its latest development would be ungated. I would hope that when Polte and the rest of these big outfits come to us again, I would hope that they would go by this and present something that wasn't gated. One, another thing I'd like to bring up, there's, there'll be a lecture on sustainable architecture at Paul Sog Hall at UNLV on March 6th, and there's a, the lecture starts at 7:00, but they have a food and thing at 6:00. Last thing, thank you very much for the ties.
You're very welcome.
Good evening, my name is Teddy Russell, resident of Las Vegas. It has become necessary for me to clear the air, I made an announcement of some very, very old news at a county commission meeting last week, that I would be a candidate for mayor in the next election. Very, very old news. However, I have a great, I am an activist, I'm not paid for being at these thousands of hours of meetings, I just want you to know that I did a Centennial Salute interview with the mayor pro tem, and the idea of my running for mayor, back at the time of the centennial, was given to me by his partner, Darrell, on April 18th of last year, when there were the swearing-in ceremonies, I reminded the mayor pro tem that I would be a candidate for mayor. I will tell you this, I have slept on the sidewalk of Wilson Street. I will tell you this, I have been wined and dined by Middle Eastern royalty. If you think I'm a degenerate, if you think I'm a bum, if you think that there's anything I haven't heard, or had, called, or done to me in my some small 61 years, okay, you just, you know, if you want to think I'm a bum, you may continue. If you want to think I'm an MF, you may continue. To understand this, if you were in politics, if you don't have huge numbers of people that hate your guts, then maybe you don't stand for anything at all. Thank you so much, and have a great evening.
Thank you very much. Young man. Wow. I'll pay you later. Yes, sir.
Once again, William Daley, 3157 North Rainbow Boulevard. I guess, after having been here for the last five hours, I guess, one thing that just bothered me is, I didn't get a chance to respond to it. I realized that we would like to stealth as many sites as we can.
Mm-hmm.
In the case of this one, we have an existing tower. We don't own the tower, we're merely leasing space on it. The cost of swapping that tower out for a stealth tower would be prohibitive to the tower owner, so it's not good business for them to have to do that, in which case they would just deny our application to go on it, which would mean we bring in another tower. And we're trying to actually use the existing towers as we can. I realize, motion's been passed, and we have the opportunity to appeal, but in having dealt with a few of the sites in the city of Las Vegas, and the stealthy requirement, there are times where you just can't stealth it. I was here two weeks ago, that you did approve a site that we had up at the detention basin at 150-foot, that originally had been, given the condition that it needed to be stealthed by 2012. But at 150 feet in the middle of the desert, there's nothing you can make it look like. There's no real way to hide it. We can do things to mitigate the visual impact of the towers, such as flush mounting the antennas and such, in various areas, and that would have been great if we could have discussed that, but it just was a denial and no discussion. So I just kind of felt like, if we'd had a chance to talk about it a little bit, we might have been able to come up with something that you might find palatable. So, I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. We won't be able to act on that, that is public participation. Gina? Are you gonna be with us anymore? So, is that why we put you through that tonight? We just want to, ladies and gentlemen, in case you know this, is Gina from Public Works last night with us. I think she is moving on to bigger and better things, I think she's moving to the 3 o'clock hour, instead of the 6 o'clock hour.
I guess.
You want to enlighten us a little bit?
Tell us about your... Yeah, I got asked to be a project manager over at the city engineer's office for the design group, so it's a really good opportunity for my career, so looking forward to it. Congratulations. Thanks. Been a misplanning...
Good opportunity for the kids, and...
Best of luck.
Thank you so much.
Best of luck, it's been a pleasure, we should have...
Likewise, likewise, thank you so much.
Thank you. With that said, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.